She has an engineering budget.
What?
She has an engineering budget. She can use her engineering budget.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town board meeting of April 25th. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance. A nice turnout tonight. Thanks for coming. Thanks for watching at home. I'm probably going to go off agenda a little bit and save some of our housekeeping for later so that many of you who are here to speak or listen aren't kept waiting. But I would like to, I'll come back to the prior minutes. Some announcements. You've been experiencing website problems, our town website, a couple of glitches, so bear with us. We're migrating our data over to a new site. So if you're not getting emails or messages, it's because we're struggling with our data. Open Book will be happening May 12th from 2:00 to 4:00 and from 6:00 to 8:00. May 13th from 12:00 to 4:00. May 15th from 9:00 to 1:00. And May 17th from 9:00 to 1:00. It's an opportunity for any of you to meet with the assessors and discuss any issues that you may have with regard to your assessment and to before grievance day, which is on the 27th. Rec Summer Camp signups are at www.ryanbackrec.com. And there will also be an in-person signup here on Town Hall, which will be on Saturday, the 10th, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m., I believe. Is that right, Bruce? Sounds right. Does anybody else have any announcements? Before we open up the Rhine Cliff discussion, Henry Campbell, our co-head of emergency services, is here to make a plea in a brief presentation. There are a couple of people in town who, when they tell you to do something, you listen, and Henry's one of them. So thanks for coming.
Good evening. Thank you for being here, and for having us. I'm here tonight to speak about the E-911 address law. Some people are familiar with it, some people are not familiar with it. On September 1st, 2000, almost 14 years ago, Dutchess County local law eight went into effect requiring all property owners in the county to promptly post their address as issued by the Dutchess County Enhanced 911 System. Almost 14 years have passed since the enactment of this law, and today approximately a conservative figure would be one-third of the homeowners and businesses located within the town and village of Rhine Beck have failed to comply with the address of the law. On the evening of March 19th, a young woman who was house-sitting sustained a heart problem and was lying on the floor of the home and unable to move. She contacted the Dutchess County Attorney and raised response on her cell phone and requested medical assistance, and the Rhine Beck Rescue Squad was dispatched. They were after the location, and after having been recontacted by the patient, the dispatcher advised that the address number posted on the mailbox was different from the actual home address. Needless to say, upon arrival, it took approximately 10 minutes to find the patient, as both addresses she had given were incorrect, and that most of the addresses on the street of the incident had not been changed in accordance with the law. Fortunately, knocking on doors and warding up and down the street in the rain enabled the rescue squad to find their location and begin medical treatment and transport. There are numerous locations in the town where there is no semblance of sequential numbering order, and the numbers run up and down in the addressing. This is because some folks have failed to change and post their addresses as required by the law. Failure to do so results in a delay of emergency response via fire, police, or medical assistance to those in their time of need. Delay can result in injury, death, or additional property loss. Incorrect addressing impacts all those folks who have complied with the law also. If their neighbors have failed to correctly post their addresses, it delays response and creates many anxious moments for emergency responders when they are unable to locate and seek assistance. Further, it jeopardizes the lives of emergency responders who are forced to drive slowly on some of the highways, frisked course down the speeding traffic bearing down on them as they seek out addresses. Both the town and the village have agreed to provide residents and businesses with a short copy of the law and how your address numbers are to be posted. Further, what needs to be done is the law has to be enforced by both the town and village within their jurisdictions. A deadline should be set, and after that date, a fine should be imposed. Emergency responders and neighbors of those who have failed to comply should be able to notify a designated town or village official, preferably a local enforcement officer, to get that follow-up on the issue. Can we find you when you need us? The law was created in part of the E-911 system to speed up the response of emergency assistance when needed. Emergency responders want to assist you in an emergency. Post your address is required, and that will help. Don't know your correct address, there's a number you can call. Thank you.
Henry, thank you for coming.
Yeah, can you read out what that number is?
Our number is 845-486-6534. That's available from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. And they'll give you your correct address. And as I said, we're gonna, the town is gonna mail these out, I believe.
We're going to have a campaign, a public awareness campaign. I'm not sure how or what the machinations of that are. It will certainly be on our website, and I believe we will have to do a mailing, and I believe we will look into a deadline and some kind of fine, because we believe it's important. But that's something the board will need to take an action on.
And the only thing I could ask my supervisor is that if you establish any kind of a fine and then you do it in conjunction with the village, so it's the same.
Village, so it's consistent?
Yes.
Yes, I think you're right.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Night, Gordon.
He's smart, he's out. I'm taking this out of order. We have our chair of our Thompson-Mazarella Park, Tommy Thompson-Sally Mazzarella Park, here to make a, I think, a brief report to the board on his committee.
Good evening, Chairman, Chairperson, and Board. Currently, the park is doing the permits needed to get to sign-offs for the site plans. The septic permit has been submitted to the health and the DDC. Both have to approve that. The entrance has been okayed by the DOT, and the stormwater plan is already ready to go and off. Right after we have all the permits, then I have to get the chairmans of the planning boards to sign the actual site plans, which will be the next thing. While we're waiting for the permits to come back, the engineers are in the process of preparing the RFPs and the front-end documentation, which we give to the town attorney for approval to make sure it's within the standards of the town. Funding-wise, we have stopped down and talked to Senator Gibson to see if there was any money available from New York State. He is also looking into that. We have made an application to the Frost Foundation for additional monies, and in May, a lot of the announcements come out for grants, which we're gonna look at and see if we can pursue them. Also, the last thing is our 501(c)(3) was submitted last June. The IRS is just this month processing applications from June of 2013. That's how far behind they are in processing 501(c)(3). So we feel that there shouldn't be a problem with it. We just have to wait until they give us approval on it. That's it, unless anybody has any questions.
I'll just say that I received a, I copied Bruce on it. I received an email today from, I can't remember whom, at the county, and I'll make sure you're copying on it, about a mandatory training session for community block grants, and I believe we've received one for the pavilion.
Yes, we have.
And there's a meeting where chairs and engineers, anyone's encouraged to come to talk about the new parameters and the billing and all the compliance with that.
Okay.
So I think I sent it, I think I copied you this afternoon when I received it, and I'll make sure that I have.
Okay, great.
So thank you. There's, we'll have a pavilion soon.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, and then we could.
And we're way down.
Thanks for your hard work. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Thank you, Bob. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
While we're on this area, and we have a couple of minutes left, are there any other committee reports or any liaison reports from anybody? I'll just say that we did complete an audit of all town accounts. We hired a CPA, and while I was on vacation, our deputy supervisor, Joe Gell, very diligently notified each department of any little glitches that were found. There was nothing major. A couple of departments exceeded the time limit of depositing money by a day, so we're, and many departments had no issues whatsoever. So I think we're in good shape with our town accounting. Joe, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
So thank you for taking care of that.
If anybody wants to take over the Facebook page for the dog park, please volunteer, because I'm terrible with Facebook. Sorry.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we have a couple of minutes. Jan, how much time do you think you need? Okay. Jan Metzger from the Rosendale Town Board is here to make a presentation on behalf of Citizens for Local Power and the New Capacity Zone. Many of you are aware that there's a plan from the state to bring in high-tension powerlines. There's four different plans being circulated, I believe. One of them goes right through our neighbor Clinton, Myland, and I know that eminent domain was an issue. That may be off the table. And in addition to that, this new powerline brings a hefty rate hike for residents and businesses, 10% and 15%. So I attend all the county supervisor and mayor's association meetings. We've banded together to register our displeasure and protest to all the different state levels, and Jan's here to make a presentation and ask us to pass a resolution doing the same as the town board. So thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you all for giving us the chance to speak with you tonight. I'm gonna. Hello, can you hear me? I could try to talk loudly. Will that happen? Okay. All right.
Test, test.
Hello, hello?
There we go.
Is it on? I'll hold it very closely. Okay, I'm going to speak, just be tightly brief, although there's so much complicated issues, but these power grid issues that directly affect us here in the Hudson Valley. The transmission upgrade plan is one. There's actually a more urgent plan in the works that I'm going to talk about with you first called the New Capacity Zone. This is mandated by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and it's to go into effect -- oops, now I'm getting a little loud. On May 1st, just a few days away. Now, this new capacity zone is a response to the same problem that the transmission upgrades are meant to address, which is we have bottlenecks or constraints in New York State's aging transmission system. And this prevents lower-cost, more abundant power that's in the north and the west of the state to get downstream to the southeastern part of the state where demand is highest. New York City, Long Island, Westchester County alone, together, account for over half the state's energy demand. These bottlenecks make electricity very expensive, especially in times of peak demand, on very hot days or very cold days, when demand can be 50% higher than usual. And it also brings reliability problems in, it raises reliability issues for our grid system going forward. So the New Capacity Zone is supposed to encourage investment in new power plants in our region. This is the first solution to these transmission bottlenecks, and it does this by raising the price of electricity in our region. There are three capacity zones in New York State. One capacity zone is just for New York City, another is for Long Island, and another is for the rest of the state. The Mid-Hudson Valley, including Ulster and Dutchess Counties, are in the rest of the state's capacity zone, which has the cheapest capacity price for electricity. Under this new order, the Mid-Hudson region is to be joined into New York City's capacity zone. This, of course, the price of electricity there is the highest, because demand is the highest. The New York Independent System Operator, which manages the grid for New York, just came out with its most updated projection, and it's going to increase the cost for ratepayers in our region by $280 million. And this is on top of expected spikes in electricity prices. This past winter, in February, we all experienced very big price hikes. It was 63% increase, I think, in Dutchess County. And another price spike is expected this summer, because it's expected to be a hotter summer. So there are enormous economic implications. It's going to make it very difficult for small businesses to pay their bills. It's going to make it very hard for many residents to pay their bills. So the, there's also another issue that the New York Public Service Commission is also opposed to this new capacity zone and has suggested that it won't actually even encourage investment if it's just essentially a transfer of wealth, $280 million, from ratepayers to existing generators, who are going to get this windfall from the increase in prices. So we have put together a model resolution of opposition to this new zone. It's been adopted by the Ulster County Legislature and by a number of municipalities. Dutchess County has also adopted a resolution as well, and we are hoping that you will consider also adopting a resolution. This decision, even though it's supposed to go into effect May 1st, it has, it is now in rehearing. It's been challenged by the Public Service Commission and others, and it's in rehearing. So there's a real opportunity to possibly change this decision. It's hard to change a first decision, but there's an opportunity if the pressure remains on that. So we hope you'll consider it. The transmit, we also submitted for your consideration a resolution to the Public Service Commission on Transmission Upgrades. This is the state's solution to these transmission bottlenecks, is to upgrade our transmission system, which would increase the carrying capacity by over 1,000 megawatts. There are four competing proposals on the table. Three proposals affect the lines running through Dutchess. One affects the lines running through Ulster. People in Dutchess communities have been very active on this issue, especially in the town of Clinton, and so you're probably more knowledgeable about that issue. But the resolution before you would basically list requirements that would be important for the PSC to require of these plans. And lastly, I know you all have a big agenda tonight. I want to just conclude by mentioning, we have a state-enabling legislation, a bill for state-enabling legislation in the state legislature for community choice aggregation. The bill was introduced by Assemblyman Cahill, and it was, it's co-sponsored by Assemblywoman Deen Barrett. This is a great tool for towns to source energy. It's basically a solution, a local solution to our energy problems, allowing municipalities to source generation directly rather than paying the utilities to do it. There is a competing, much weaker bill that would be just a pilot for Westchester County for five years. We feel that that is not a good bill for the rest of the state and would delay postponed for a number of years other communities' ability to take advantage of this tool. So we hope you would, I've given you some material summarizing CCAs, and we hope you would consider a letter of support to the state legislative leadership to support Assembly Bill 8883 for statewide enabling legislation. Thank you very much.
Jan, one question, is there?
On the resolution and what your group is doing with respect to transmission lines, there's nothing in there about exploring underground lines. Is that left out on purpose?
No, it wasn't left out on purpose. I think that's a very valuable thing to do. One of the proposals sort of sets a precedent for the balance proposal, which is the proposal affecting the Ulster side of the river. It doesn't run through Dutchess. It's the power lines it's upgrading. And they're undergrounding it under the Hudson River, but it does sort of set the precedent for that discussion, and that's something that you could include in a local resolution. I think that would be a better.
As part of this resolution, and then you're asking us to.
Yeah, I think that would be very valuable, yeah. You know, tailoring it to your, you know, priorities is a very worthwhile thing.
Thank you for coming and presenting to us. Does the public have any questions or any members of the board or any comments? Jessica Scott from the CAV, thank you very much for doing this, and I think we can vote on these resolutions now and then go back to our agenda. So, thank you, thank you. So again, going out of order to tab nine, Resolution 2014, 224, opposing the new capacity zone. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have tab 10, Town of Rhine Beck Resolution 2014, 225, on opposed transmission upgrades. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would have ended to add a number five in here about the exploring, putting the wires underground.
Would you be able to add that language? Will pass it with that caveat that we're going to?
Yeah.
I agree with that. You know, it's more costly for the power companies, but it's better for us. So thank you for that suggestion. With that amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's so moved. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I don't check them off now, I'll never. Okay, we have a discussion item that we noticed the public for 7 o'clock, so thank you for your patience. We're a little behind. It's a continued discussion of the Rhine Cliff sewer, stormwater drainage and potential sewer grant that we're looking at. Our grant writer, Victor Cornelius of Endeavor, is here, and I know we have several members of the public. I'm going to open the floor for discussion. Would you like to address us? Sure, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Victor Cornelius. Been doing grant writing down off on for, that's about 10 years now, is that right, Bruce? Thought you'd remember. But in any case. I came in about six months ago. Yeah, I guess about six months ago, seven months ago, with initiative, that funding initiative through the Superstorm Sandy funding. I probably should briefly reiterate what it is that's on the plate. Currently, there is a rather large sum of funding. It is about to be released. It's the HUD Disaster Recovery Funding. It's been released from Washington, D.C. It's part of the Superstorm Sandy appropriation of January 31st, 2013. It is coming from Housing and Urban Development, and it is going to be block-granted out through the New York Office of Community Renewal. It is a 100% grant process, and there is $1.23 billion for the Hudson Valley north of Westchester and Houghton Downs available in this funding. I've been given the green light from both Congressman Gibson and Congressman Maloney's office to assemble as many projects as there are possible to bring in, and it was thought at that time, at the point at which it became clear that this funding was coming our way, that it might be a great opportunity to think about putting in a stormwater management system and a wastewater processing system for the Hamlet and Rhine Cliff, largely because I think it's, what exists there is in a privately owned context, and more and more communities up and down the river are depending upon the Hudson for their drinking water. And it actually probably is a matter of time before the DBC comes to the town with a request to address this. So I just thought it would be a great opportunity to be preemptive as far as the DBC was concerned, and see if there was something that could be designed and implemented that worked and paid for by 100% grant for the Hamlet.
Let me, Victor, set the table a little bit more. At a recent meeting, a couple of residents from Rhine Cliff appeared, and they argued that it really is a mistake to apply for such a grant, because construction of stormwater sewers and/or sanitary sewers is not a good idea. So I've scheduled this so we could actually hear from a group of Rhine Cliff residents as to how they feel about it.
Absolutely.
Is there anybody here to comment on this issue? Can I ask you to please approach the microphone and introduce yourself? Thank you.
My name is Richard Macaluso. I'm on Charles Street in Rhine Cliff. If we could just have more background, this is the first meeting I'm coming to. I don't know what my thinking is, because I have no background, but I'm asking for lengthy background.
I think more will come out in the comments. Basically, the two residents who appeared said that the sanitary sewer system would involve a treatments plant, there would be a large annual cost to the homeowners, because we have to form a sewer district. And they're here, they can certainly speak for themselves, so I think you will be filled in as to what the thinking is pro and con by your neighbors. We've heard for years that there is a drainage problem in Rhine Cliff. Some people say it's not so bad, we can live with it. We've heard something about maybe, and we're not sure, some sewage is going into wastewater. We don't know if that's true or not.
Going back even farther, in the 1990s, and Victor, maybe you want to speak to this, there was a study done that showed that there were issues with several houses with the Department of Health. I have a call into our representative, I have an ongoing dialogue, and we know that certain houses have flags on them and have sewage not being treated properly. An alternative to an overriding system could be testing and seeing which houses are compliant, which aren't, and dealing with them individually. We know that some houses have not been able to be rented or sold because of these issues. So there's hard evidence, and there's, you know, there's less hard evidence. We also know that we've had, with ice storms and rainstorms, stormwater drainage issues. Our highway superintendent, Kathy Consella, and her crew have been very diligent about repairing and installing catch basins for these, and in doing so have found that sometimes sewage and stormwater or water drainage is mixed. So there seems to be an issue within the Hamlet. It was built on hard rock, there's not a lot of perk. Some septic systems are failing or are non-existent. We don't know the extent of the problem. This grant would let us look into it, and we have heard from some Rhine Cliff residents that, you know, maybe we're looking into something that would open a bigger problem than what we're willing to deal with. Victor made us aware of a grant that could deal with it, so we are discussing it. We want to know what the people think. Thank you, thank you for coming. Any further questions or comments, please come up.
I am just talking as a resident.
I am just talking as a resident of Rhine Cliff, not knowing anything about that.
Could you introduce yourself?
My name is Grace Gunning.
Okay, Grace what?
Gunning, G U N N I N G. And I am one of houses that does have septic problems and I have replaced my septic system and now my leach field, because there's bedrock, is just not happy.
Doesn't perk.
And, you know, I've heard things that it would cost us so much money, no one wants that, but I'm interested in hearing about a grant or is there a bonding that can be done or something that can make it so that the people who live there aren't feeling that they're doing something that's not good for the ecology of the land. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody else, please come up?
My name is Wendell Schmidt and I live in Rhine Cliff. And so, I think, this is my first hearing of it today and I wonder about the grants. I was involved in fundraising quite a bit over the U.K. as the head of Perry and I know that you attract more givers by getting some little grants and then you can go after bigger ones, et cetera. And I have a fear here and my fear is that this is something as far more expensive than we're being led to believe, number one. Two, I would want to know that if we had a grant, we're going to get a grant that covers 100% of it, no questions asked, so we don't get zapped with some kind of assessment a little later saying, whoops, we made a mistake. Battleship started 10 million and go up to 200 million. Sewer plant started 20 million and go up to 40 million and so these are just facts of life.
Yes.
Expenses just increase, inflation takes hold, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would want to make sure, I'm one of the guys, I replaced the septic system and had dryweld because they went bad on me, but I replaced them, end of story. I fixed them fast.
It works.
And absolutely does work, it just cost me a few bucks, I will tell you that, but it's done. Because I'm responsible enough to do that and I don't have a deep pocket, so when I do it, it costs me, it's hard for me. However, I do know that inflation takes place and so well-meaning things start off one way and then end up completely different. Also, I've got one house, there are people here, they've got many houses that have a much bigger vested interest in having that grant take place and so just want to be on the record to say that I want to see it as something that's in motion, that we're watching, but that we're not going to let get out of control and that we're not going to give any particular individual a whole lot of blessing versus us getting some little benefit out of it and some assessment later on. But I do believe an assessment will take place.
Well, I want to speak to that. I want to be very clear that this grant is for, would be for infrastructure, so it would be for stormwater drainage and sewer infrastructure and I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say that the sewer district would need to be created and the houses would have to pay to maintain, you know, the infrastructure as our hope would be 100% taken care of, but there would be an assessment, a district would be created. That's why we're...
That's good, thank you.
We're proceeding very, you know, we want to listen and we realize that there's a need and a burden and we don't want to rush, I'll speak for myself, I don't want to rush into anything.
I agree. Rhine Cliff is named that way for a reason.
Yes.
And we live on a rock.
Yes.
I grow tomatoes in buckets because I can't dig a hole in my ground.
Yes, but I...
So, I just want to say, when you're digging a ledge, I've been in real estate building for a long time, when you're digging through ledge, it's costing an awful lot of money and so that's something that's, and I don't even want to think it's a hidden cost, I want us all to be aware of how expensive that really is. You're not digging in earth, you're digging in a rock.
The septic system, septic system that you've put in, was that a leach field or is something in your basement that takes care of the sewage?
It's a beehive with a big leach in it.
You know, the citizens who...
It picks up my whole yard.
The citizens who presented a couple of meetings now, I'm sorry, I can't remember, you know, there are other possible ways to go about this with single self-contained units for houses that aren't compliant or that fail and we realize that digging in rock could change water patterns of, Kathy Duquette and Nancy Clark, I believe, and Anthony Arnie will be here tonight, but they would, they are engineers, we've identified, who would write the grant and we're not, I think, we haven't decided if we're going to proceed. We want to hear from the public, so this is...
I do want to add my voice to that.
And I appreciate that.
And to say that it's, it would be naive if we don't think this is a huge dollars involved, that it means there's not going to be a problem.
Huge dollars and a district created, which would have an assessment.
And then maintenance and assessment, et cetera.
Yes.
So, I want to be on the side that says, no, please don't do that unless it's an absolute emergency.
Thank you.
Let me just say this, what I don't know, maybe some people in the audience can educate us, if we just did stormwater and not did septic, would there be an annual maintenance cost?
Can you...
Generally, stormwater management systems are paid, are maintained by the municipality out of the taxes. There would not be necessarily a district required. I can maybe, I'll speak a little bit to the process that we're engaging here. We're waiting for the governor's office to announce the availability of the funding. There will be a letter of intent requested, it's generally a two to three page description of the project, which will work in a kind of preliminary context with Erdman Anthony on, and then one dollar figure, and I've been told to take that and mark it up 30%. And I have actually, they are now announcing the FEMA brand awards, which are being funded out of the same pot of money. I'm working on a project in Cornwall that's a $53 million wastewater treatment facility. The sums of money that are being dispersed in the Superstorm Sandy Appropriation are really very, very large and this is, we hope, a once in a generation federal appropriation with not a lot of strings attached to it, as long as it deals with engaging stormwater management issues and wastewater and water infrastructure issues that need to be pardoned in the context of severe storm events. Because I think you will all find that if we have continued weather exchanges, the way we're having, you know, the severe colds with the amount of snow we're getting and then the intense storm events of the late summer and the early fall, that septic systems are going to take a hit in an exponentially difficult way and that actually having a regional management system in place is going to be of a benefit. At least that's the way the state and the federal government feel about it and they've made this money available.
Thank you. Come on up.
My name, my name is Steve, just working?
Yes.
My name is Steve Utley. I've lived in Rhine Cliff for about 27 years. I was the chairman of the Rhine Cliff Wastewater Committee back in 1991, when the last time the Hamlet addressed this problem on an official basis. The motivation back then was the Creed development and the Rhine Garden development needed sewage, so they thought that they would build a plant and Rhine Cliff hooked up to it and take advantage of it then, so we did a lot of work back then, reading the engineering reports, meeting with the Health Department, meeting with the D E C, looking at a variety of alternatives to how to approach the problem. But it was very clear back then that the cost for building and maintaining a sewer treatment plant was exorbitant and really beyond the means of the people of Rhine Cliff, even without support from the developers in building a sewer treatment plant. I think the numbers showed back then that it was, if every house in Rhine Cliff hooked up, which was very unlikely at the time, that it was going to cost on the order of $100, $150 a month for each house to pay for belonging to the sewer district. And now I'm sure the numbers are even higher. So, even if the state were to pay for the plant, you're still living with the operating maintenance costs and all the problems that emerge down the line, as you well know from Vanberg Co. story and the Woodstock story, this can be a bigger problem than funding the plant to begin with. While I'm totally sympathetic with my neighbors who have more serious problems than I do, it's going to be a real civil war in Rhine Cliff if you start, you know, trying to get people who don't have problems, who spent a lot of money building their own sewage treatment systems to belong to a sewer district and you're going to have neighbors fighting with neighbors, I don't want to pay $150 a month, my system is fine, deal with your own problem, it's going to get, it'll get really ugly there. And just by applying for the grant, you're already opening up the Pandora's Box of that. I don't understand the grant thing, I looked online a bit and it wasn't clear to me, the Sandy money, from what I could tell, was designed for towns that had sewage treatment plants, but during the storm, the plants couldn't absorb all the stormwater, so they were discharging into whatever water body. I couldn't see anything online, perhaps you can clarify this for me, about building new sewer treatment plants. This is like creating a problem when we don't even have them, because right now, officially, you say that there's some red flags, but officially, back in 1991, the Health Department came, we tested all of the buildings and they identified where the problems were and we dealt with them as best as we could using whatever system the property could handle and they went away and we've never, the Health Department, the D E C have never come back and said, you have to do something about this. If the town says, we have a problem, we have to do something about that, you're going to make the problem, you're going to start identifying where the problems are, you're going to have to make those red flags much more public, the grant proposal is going to have to identify the scope of the problem, then if the grant doesn't come through or if the town votes not to become, you know, join the sewer district, you've identified a problem and you have no way to deal with it. So, you can make the situation a lot worse than it is now. So, I'd be very cautious about proceeding, look much more closely to the town to see what kind of sentiment there would be towards forming a sewer district, having a referendum, voting for it, seeing what kind of numbers you're talking about, because if it comes down to 15 or 20 houses, buildings, that's a long way from 150 or even half that money as they were talking about. Plus, where is this thing going to go? Back in 1991, that was a huge problem and at that point, the developer was willing to offer some property that's not on the table anymore and it was close to the Hamlet, everybody was worried about the smells and all the problems that are associated with being near sewage treatment plants. And if I, one last question and then I'll stop because I know other people want to talk. Is this a planning grant or is this actually to pay for the treatment plant itself? Because if it's a planning grant, it's one thing, if you're talking about paying for the treatment plant itself, you're way ahead of the game, you're like talking about paying for something that we don't even know if we want to buy yet.
Thank you.
Do you say, I do want to ask you a question. Okay. As part and parcel of the process, the municipality will have to move forward to form a district. The formation of that district will be based upon the engineering studies of the cost for the project and an operations and maintenance budget and it will have a structure in that engineering thing as to what the, what it's called, the cost per equivalent dwelling unit, you can do here, which is a two and a half person household essentially will be. And the municipality will have a full referendum period to consider it, debate about it, to discuss it and to decide whether or not it's actually a good idea. And that has to be tackled. One of the things I would suggest perhaps, the consolidated funding application process is opening up on Thursday and there's a June 14th deadline. If you'd like for me to put in the cost for Erdman Anthony for the engineering, just review the situation and come up with a preliminary concept for public discussion. The other thing I would venture to put on the table, given the last 20 years, I'm doing a lot of work in package systems that are not traditional mechanical systems, that don't have the big plant at the bottom of the hill with everything running down into it the way a lot of municipalities have traditionally. I'm doing, I'm funding the installation of a peat-based system, which is very, very small geographically and is completely underground, down in the town of Woffinghamshire for a 20-house development and we're also working on a system based on a managed wetlands concept, where once again, the effluent comes into a tank that's got gravel with a field of plants on the top of it and it's the roots of the plants that actually process the waste materials and remove the suspended solids and the phosphorus and all of the pollutants. And what you see there is a field, a small field, essentially that's what it is visually. And those are highly fundable and very green and very, very low maintenance and pretty sustainable. And I think, and they also, you also may find with appropriate engineering that you may be tapped in two or three small package units that take care of the need for a failing septic system and are not very large in terms of the amount of geographic space it would take up from the municipality. I think that I would suggest that you engage a design process and see if it suits you and then make your decision as to whether or not it does. There are lots of options out there, there are lots of different price ranges with it. The funding process, the actual construction thing hasn't even opened yet and it's going to be a year and a half to two years before you get the contract from the state. And, you know, it is a problem, it is an issue, it is a greater issue for some households than for others, but as a community, I think it's worthwhile to take a look at it, particularly if we have the opportunity of grant funding. It's my position.
Thank you, Victor. Steve, I think Joe had a question for you.
Can I just ask you a question? In the 1991 study in your activities, was any consideration given just for a stormwater system?
I'm sure there was, but that wasn't the concern of our committee and that wasn't really what the town was talking about at that point. At that point, the developers wanted to build a sewage treatment plant, there was a location near Rhine Cliff that was convenient for them, there was talk back then about how many houses were involved.
I understand.
All that kind of stuff. So, anyway, in any case, I'll just close by saying, while this may seem like a pressing problem to you, this is Rhine Cliff and it's been that way for a long time. Back during the New Deal, FDR offered to build a sewage treatment plant in Rhine Cliff and the Republicans in Rhine Beck didn't want to take New Deal money. So, you know, this has been an ongoing situation here and it's not as if a Rhine Cliff will live or die by whether we have a sewage treatment plant. The Hamlet has ways of dealing with these problems on an individual basis and it's not necessary to completely rip up every street in the Hamlet, damage the foundations of individual houses and try and get everybody participating in a problem, solving a problem like this. If you feel that everybody in Rhine Cliff should help, the 15 or 20 houses that have a problem, you should form a sewer district that includes all of Rhine Beck and get everybody in Rhine Beck helping to pay for solving those problems the way they did in Woodstock when they formed a sewer district. The people who were in the district ran into problems that caused overruns and everybody else in Woodstock had to bail them out. So, everybody in Rhine Beck should be taking an interest in this because in the long run, everybody may wind up having to participate in solving this problem. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Yuris Pross. My wife Nora and I have lived in Rhine Cliff for about 20 years and I just have a simple point to make. I thought I heard that someone said there's no water problem in Rhine Cliff and I can't believe that in my ears, because when we have a serious storm, I mean, the houses, my house and the houses around me are like little islands in huge lake and it all flows downhill. Now, maybe there are some fortunate individuals who are fortunate not to have a water problem, but I see it all over where, in my neighborhood, and people are draining their salt or into the streets and you can see it, this is not a good setup. So, there is a water problem in Rhine Cliff. So, there is a water problem in Rhine Cliff. Not that I've ever seen every single person in Rhine Cliff affected, I don't know, but I think it's quite major. And I think it's also important, second point, to separate the water problem from the sewage problem. I, we, after some expense, no longer have a sewage problem. We fixed it before we even had one, but I'm sure that there are people who do. And perhaps I'm wrong in saying that we don't have, we don't, in our house, we don't have a sewage problem, because when you have these great storms, the water that flows in over everything actually seems to have a sewage odor. My wife, as we know, is better than mine, and she can tell you that, but also I can some of the time. So, if there is definitely a water problem in Rhine Cliff, I don't think that's the problem. Maybe some individuals are fortunate enough not to have it. It'd be good to figure out exactly what the numbers are. Maybe we can separate the water problem from the sewage problem, and if there are only a few people who have sewage problems, then that can maybe be taken care of on a house-by-house basis. But as far as water drainage is concerned, to say that Rhine Cliff doesn't have a problem just blows me away.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Piper Woods. I live in the town of Rhinebeck, and I have a business in Village Rhinebeck.
I can't hear you.
Oh. I really am just curious, you have a business in Village Rhinebeck, and you're on the village, in the village sewer district. So, I was just curious, how many households would actually be on Village Rhinebeck Sewer District? If there was, if you were creating a sewer district for the hamlet in Rhine Cliff, excuse me, how many, like, how large of a district would that be?
We haven't defined that yet. We don't even know if we're applying.
No, I understand that, but if you're, if you're thinking about building the, if you're having, you're building a plant, then a certain amount of households will have to pay for the upkeep of it, and that is usually determined by the sewer district. So I was just curious if you had any, I don't even know how many houses are in Rhine Cliff.
Let me just be clear, we haven't applied for anything. We're still discussing it. We're, we're very mindful of the issues facing the hamlet, and there is no sewer district, there's not even an application. We're talking about maybe applying for some federal money that could help us with stormwater drainage or sewage. And we may decide to do stormwater drainage, and we may decide to go on a house-by-house basis and look at sewers as a separate issue, so.
Sure, I completely understand that. I guess my point was really just that, at the point when you consider, obviously, how many houses, I was just curious. And then, my other question is, I think you mentioned it, if you do stormwater drainage or something, even said that the taxes, basically, the upkeep of the plant is...
Stormwater drainage doesn't have a plant.
Well, the stormwater drainage doesn't have a plant.
Conduits, catch basins.
But the maintenance of such would be covered by the town? Okay, so that would be covered by, under the taxes of the town?
Yes.
Whereas if there was a sewer, for the sewer thing, that would just be covered by...
The district.
The district, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Juri Nolzappel. I live in Rhine Cliff. I live on the bottom of the hill, and I've lived in Rhine Cliff for 54 years, and I have not had a sort of basement at all. I have no problems. And I read online that if they go in drilling and doing everything, shifting the water flow, that people who never did get water in their basements could get it, as basements get it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Gregson Harris. I live at Kelly Street in Rhine Cliff, and we purchased our house about 10 years ago. And as part of the process, we had to do a new septic system. And we hired someone, we knew what they were doing. It wasn't terribly expensive, it was a small investment, but not a huge, huge investment. And it's been working great for 10 years. We get a problem, we get it pumped out every few years, and, you know, I think that's really the path that you all should be looking, in terms of what you do, what property owners can do. The technology is changing and improving all the time. There's solutions that are available now, which weren't out there 10 years ago. I think there's certainly room for incremental progress in a sewer system, but I really feel that you may be going down the wrong path, in terms of what I've been hearing so far about this particular grant, and what's being talked about. Thank you.
Your septic system is a leach field?
It's a septic tank with a leach field, and it was designed by someone who really knows Rhine Cliff, and it was approved by the health department, and we had no problems with it.
Thank you.
I guess the question we have is, is this feasible for a very small lot? I don't know how much land you have.
It is feasible. It has very innovative and clever ways of making things work. Rhine Cliff, because of the lot size and such, my understanding is the health department is a little bit more flexible in terms of what they approve. They have a set of standards which put you through the buy-by if you have, you know, a very large piece of property, but there are ways of doing septic, especially the more innovative types on smaller pieces of property. And there's quite a number of examples of that, that you can see in Rhine Cliff.
How big is your lot?
I don't know exactly. It's in the center, it's in the center of Rhine Cliff, so it's, it's, you know, there's a front lawn, but...
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Richard Kofashansky. I live in Rhine Cliff. I've lived there for 34 years. I've lived there, but I also have a lot of other properties I marked out. Rhine Cliff, I don't know where we're going to go with this, but many houses do have water problems in the basement. I mean, it's, I know that the library, Morton, has a terrible water problem. A lot of the, right in the center of town, the commercial places are, there's like rivers running through it. What you said before about making some properties worth less and harder to sell is really true. I think the Queens just sold their property, and they had a problem with it because of the river running through their basement. So there is a problem. I don't know, you know, Joe keeps on talking about perhaps maybe just the stormwater fix or whatever, which is basically, we have a stormwater system there now, it's just not working properly. So maybe that is a way to go. But, like, Greg, he has a big enough piece of property, there's a lot of properties that are just post-leach-stamped properties in the middle of Rhine Cliff that do have problems. And the 17 houses that were cited in 1993, and they were fixed, I think, and some of them are failing again. Especially when we have a lot of, what Yorgis said, when we have a lot of storms, I mean, that water mixes, it's so obvious, it just mixes, it drains, floods the septic systems that are, that are there, and there's, you know, that sweet smell of sewage wafting through the hamlet. It's a problem. I, you know, I'm not quite sure what to do with it. I mean, you know, when people are talking about sewage plants, I mean, you're talking about a huge plant. I think one of the biggest fears is that they think, or we think, that perhaps it's going to be a big, a huge plant that would make it easier for more development, for cream, and for other bigger plots of land. And as Victor said, there's many ways of doing it. It doesn't have to be that big, huge plant. So, and I'm not saying there should be. I'm saying that it's not an easy problem, I'm saying there's not an easy solution, I mean, but it is a, it is a problem. So, I don't know where we go with it. I know that, again, the waters are running through a lot of the buildings, and maybe it's the stormwater drain, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Andrew.
My name is Andrew Seppert.
I'm going to have to pick it up and hold it really close.
I live in Rhine Cliff, and I've been on a lot of, I think, some of the, we've talked about these issues for a long time. When you, if you just say, oh, look, we're going to get a plant, and, you know, this isn't a business of writing a grant, so businesses, you pay for a grant. The problems that are unforeseen with this are huge. And right now, the town doesn't own this problem. The individual homeowners and business owners are supporting this problem, whatever you think that problem may be. In actuality, you're not getting to question the health department or the DPC, because we're fortunate that we're on a fjord, we're on a part of the ocean that goes by four times a day. So while no one likes to smell a little whatever, it's not causing disease and problems, when we do get a storm, there is a lot going off. I had the consultant break about doing repairs. I understand the next couple of days, we're going to see how the most recent repair helps, because a lot of water coming off the top there before against the business's house. And you can hear the water going over the cliff where she picks that. The problem is, if you get federal money and you start ripping up the existing drainage system and putting in new pipes, the federal government is not going to allow you to connect anything into that that is not chemically tested and pure when there. Now, we have clean water going through the hamlet, we have dirty water going through the hamlet. What you're proposing is basically chipping away at the rock, making channels, you're fracking, you're changing the course of all this underground water. And people who don't have water, why the roof water? People who have a pump that's going out currently, whether it be dry or whatever, going out into the existing drainage system, they're going to be cut off unless that water is perfectly clean. So that water is going to go somewhere. It's going to come up onto the streets and run down the streets. In the winter, it's going to be great with all the ice. The unforeseen consequences of getting a big lump sum of money to solve these problems is huge. The other thing I'd like to say is that when the hotel rebuilt and wanted to be a restaurant and a hotel, James and his brother never came to me and said, "How much are you going to pay for my system?" They put in a plan to take care of the problem. The, and fact did the same thing. Many people have made repairs. The solution here is much worse than any problem. There isn't a problem scientifically identified, nobody's could have said this. The other thing is, if you take, if you could miraculously put a system in without all of the work and pay for it, you'd be pooling together all of this sewage that is now seeping through the earth. You'd be pooling it together, treating it mildly, and dumping it into the river, in massive quantities. That's not better for the river, that's not an improvement for the river. And by the way, it happens to be, you'd be draining it out near the village water intake. So, I just wanted to add those comments.
Thank you. I just want to state that we're going to, three minutes per person, if we could keep it to that. And, you know, to your point, Andrew, fracking, we don't know what we're doing yet, so I don't think anyone's proposing fracking and fracking.
No, no, no. I'm not saying fracking for any of the stations. The process is the same that you're, you're...
Right.
...draining the earth and creating channels of water.
We would hope that there would be something, if we choose to do this, that's innovative and non-invasive, or, who knows? But we haven't designed anything yet. Maybe we get a grant just to look at a portion of a problem. We don't know, that's what the discussion's about. Thank you.
Or be a system that augments the current septic system, not replaces it.
Well, I think that would be a necessary...
Well, yeah, but there are many, many, many alternatives, not just...
Not just a disaster of fracking.
Well, the people in Rhine Cliff know, if you're trying to dig a whole shore fence though, it's virtually impossible.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm CJ DeGennaro, resident of Rhine Cliff. I, a few months ago, I began working on this, anything on this topic at all. And for my own purposes, I started out as an environmental scientist, a professor of environmental science at a university, and in the last three months, just doing a little bit of research, I guess the three points is, is one, that there is storm drainage issues in Rhine Cliff. Those, those issues happen, you know, occasionally in the hamlet. And they are, it is an issue, but I keep hearing people talk about the smell of feces and waste. And the thing that this individual told me that I found to be pretty critical was that to seek out superstorm saving funds to create a centralized treatment plant is somewhat ironic. He told me that, first of all, that Rhine Cliff is a point source for polluting the river, and that by centralizing the treatment of the waste, what you're doing is you're eliminating the benefits of all of the leach fields in Rhine Cliff. And when there is a major storm, a system that, that we might be able to get a grant for and put in, wouldn't be able to accommodate the amount of waste that Rhine Cliff would produce during that time period. So, the irony is that during the times that we think that the system is going to benefit the river, that's when it's going to be polluting the river the most. So I agree that there are some issues of stormwater drainage in the hamlet, but the irony of trying to fix that problem with superstorm sandy money, my concern is a centralized sewer treatment plant, environmentally speaking, not economically speaking, because I've heard all of your problem, that, I'm sure you all have too, it sounds like a bad idea, but to all of you, he said environmentally, this would be a giant step backwards for the river. So I just thought it was ironic, and I felt we need to share that with Facebook.
Thank you.
What is your name?
CJ DeGennaro. I'm up at the top of the hill, so during these storms, I don't quite get the benefits of that runoff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Good evening.
Resident of Rhine Cliff. And I've just built a new residence on the upstream, and I just wanted to let you know for your information, I'm on 25 acres, and I put a P filtration system in, and it's doing fine. It did cause a bit, so I'm now really interested in joining the district. I also have a property in the, near the stop sign at the base of, right near the corner market, and it has flooded and been very wet, although I do have a P system in, so...
This thing that you put in, that did not involve leach field?
Yeah, it's for a small-sized lot, I got part of land and space to do any...
And it goes in the ground or in the basement?
Well, it's like a big rectangle, and you see, I got a plastic top that you can just put straw over or something to hide it. But then it goes into a collection area, so basically, it's that and a pump, and it has to be monitored. The county was fine with it, but you have to sign an agreement with the contractor to monitor it once a year.
Would you mind giving us an idea of what the cost is?
I want to say somewhere between 20 and 30,000. I want to say somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000.
Thank you.
I can speak a little bit to P E T systems, which are very effective and very popular at the moment. Essentially, what they do is they bring P E T over from Ireland and use that as the filtration device for the waste. The problem with that is, one of the things that I was asking in the course of this system I'm funding down in the town of Wofford is that there's some concern that the supply of P E T from Ireland may be restricted after a few years, because they seem to be running out.
Thank you.
I should give thought to how I've lived in Rhine Cliff since 1978 and bought my house. And I will answer the Wofford's question first, because it's come up again. Wofford is not like Rhine Cliff at all. It's a large plot area, and it has a long approach to the river. And the river boils outside here. We know what the ice acts on. The idea of even putting any kind of temporary structure there is not good because of the power of the river coming around Rhine Cliff. So that, I think that we just want to discuss, never discuss Wofford in the same breath as we discuss Rhine Cliff. Rhine Cliff is a place which is on rock. I am on total rock at my house on the corner of Russell and Kelly Street. There is a little thin covering to things. And I have a perfectly well-working, very well-working septic system. As far as the being water in Rhine Cliff, are you going to tell God not to rain on Rhine Cliff anymore? It starts at the top of the hill. It comes down on the rock. It goes into basins underneath this thin skin of rock where it collects water and waters. I have a magnolia tree that you can't kill. It's got to sink in some time, a pool of water under this rock. But this rock, 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 it starts at the top, it comes down, and it comes down in torrents, and it gathers steam as it comes down. And what it does is it also filters itself. So that is a stormwater thing. The septic system thing is an entirely different thing. But to say that there's water in Rhine Cliff and you're going to get rid of it, you're not going to get rid of it. It is the way that Teddy Hamlet is. And it has a lot to do with the way the winds come through the cask hills. It has a lot to do with how the river goes by. It has a lot to do with a lot of things. It's a very, very old settlement, and it's not going to get rid of this big rains. And whether or not you believe in climate change, it is going to be there. So I think that it is something that's viable where. People have streams. I have one going through my house. But it filters itself as it goes down, and then it disappears down under the ground, and it keeps filtering itself as it goes down. It filters itself. It is a natural process. And I think it would do a lot better than the type of system that they're even entertaining or even doing a plan for, because it's wasting their time. There are a lot of things that need to be done in Rhinebeck and Rhine Cliff. And Rhine Cliff, it is, by the way, part of the town of Rhinebeck, if you never know it, but it is. And it is very important that we look at it as a street system of weather there. And anybody who's bought a house in there who doesn't know that the water runs down, and it runs down, and it runs down, and it runs down, is a flood trial.
We'll take a couple of more comments. Are there a lot of people here that want to speak to this? Can I see a show of hands? Two, three more, and then, you know, this is something we can continue to. There's no decision being made. Hi, Matt.
Hi, Matt Rosenberger. I gave the presentation that sort of inspired this meeting.
Yes.
Close to you, Matt.
Okay, Matt Rosenberger, resident of Rhine Cliff. And he was the one who gave the presentation, which I think partially inspired this. I'm going to talk really quickly and give you three minutes. First, it's not a totally unknown entity. People don't realize how much it might cost for operation and maintenance. There was a study that was funded in 1990 that came up with three scenarios for how sewage could be treated in Rhine Cliff. And the least expensive way they came up with, if you had 150 houses, that in today's dollars would be around $1,600 a year per resident, per household. You can look at the engineering report. Elaine has it on her website. So there are numbers, and that's if 150 houses join. If there were 80 houses, which is what the Health Department proposed in 1980, it would be closer to $3,000 per household, per year in today's dollars. So it is actually an expensive sewage district. But putting that aside, what is the actual problem? Hudson River Keepers, they monitor the river up and down. They have 75 monitoring stations. They don't put any near Rhine Cliff. They don't find it at all a problem. They don't have any even remotely near us. The closest to us is Tibbely Bay. The other direction is another several miles. They are actually diligent about monitoring the river, and they don't see a problem. The Kingston across the river from us, where they do have a monitoring station on their sewage treatment plant, their outflow, is one of the 10 worst locations in the river of all 75 monitoring stations in terms of how much is coming out of it. And that's coming out of the sewage treatment plant. So the other part of this, and CJ touched upon this, that sewage treatment plants, especially in large bodies of water, they're called secondary, not tertiary plants. They're not magic. They don't treat the water perfectly. They treat it to some extent. So things do go in water. If you pour paint thinner down your drain, that's going to go in the Hudson River. It doesn't get filtered out completely by the sewage treatment plant. Feces would be treated, and they have, the sludge is removed and pumped out. But just now, actually, Eric Schneiderman is about to litigate, because he's going to stop what many people in this room probably use, facial scrubs. They have tens of thousands of microbeads, which have now been found, are not, they go right through sewage treatment plants all over the world. There are thousands of things that go through sewage treatment plants. When you concentrate it, and in the engineering report in 1990, they were estimating a sewage treatment plant for Rhine Cliff at 90,000 gallons per day. Some perspective, the Rhine Cliff Hotel is 7,200 gallons per day. So when you concentrate 90,000 gallons, and make no mistake, no one is going to build a sewage treatment plant that can only accommodate the exact number of houses they have to build for overcapacity, which would be silly. They're going to build at least to handle the hamlet. So it's going to be larger than you want. Not necessarily a large structure, but it's going to treat a lot of liquid and effluent, more than you necessarily want. And when you pump that in the river, you're not going to make the river cleaner, you're going to make the river dirtier. And no one is running over to Rhine Cliff because six or eight sewers are, six or eight septic systems may be overflowing sometimes into the river. The river is really large, trillions of gallons. It's often said, the solution to pollution is dilution, and that's actually true when you have a large body of water. So we don't necessarily have a quantified problem scientifically, and we're trying to put something in which could make the problem much worse. One last point on P E T. P E T is a tremendously unsustainable product. It is mined, it contains 10% of trapped carbon. Environmentalists are livid that people are mining P E T. Gardeners, organic gardeners, don't use P E T anymore because it is terrible, terrible, terrible for the environment to mine P E T anywhere in the world.
Thank you, Matt. No, I'm going to let Jen LaBelle speak.
Hi, I'm Jennifer L, I'm a resident of Rhine Cliff. I live in one of the houses right down by the library, small property. And the only thing I wanted to add to the discussion is that in the seven years that we've owned our house, every year is completely different in terms of runoff. Obviously, sandy was crazy, and it was knee-deep in the street. But there are years where our B-DI system is spitting out so much water that there's ice on the street, that we have to break up. And then we have a winter like this where there was endless snow, and there was no ice in front of my house. And there are times where there's a river running through our B-DI system, and there are times where it's very dry. And I don't see a lot of consistency. I think there's definitely a water problem in Rhine Cliff, because as everybody has said, I mean, I put a bird feeder in the ground, and I hit stone. So I think, yeah, I don't have a solution, but I'm terrified of what we'll find if we start digging in Rhine Cliff. So, there you go.
Thank you. Are there any other people who'd like to be heard on this? We can continue this. Any people here on the board have any comments?
Victor, when do you speak?
When do I see the big LOI coming out? I keep promising it every weekend, and it has not materialized.
Right. You told us what's coming out in November, and you had an active media...
The one piece of news is that the governor has been, is beginning to release the female awards. The first 10 were announced in the last, about two weeks ago. I have 3.8 million, sorry, I added that.
3.8 million?
Yeah.
Which isn't that much for a project like...
Well, they're digging out, they're going to dig out the Creek and Line in Concord.
Oh.
So...
Mazel tov, yeah.
Right. But what I would suggest, you know, I don't think, hey, the idea of a mechanical system has even been discussed fully or decided upon at all. And as far as the 1991 reports, there's an enormously broader range of technologies that have come out since then that are far more sustainable. I put P E T out as one that actually is a solution to geographic issues because it requires a relatively small amount of land to put in. So what I would suggest is beginning to engage the debate and to see if there is one. And I think that's fair. And I would be very happy to see if we put in an engineering request, as the CFA coming up, June 14th, and see if we can at least do a publicly engaged analysis of what goes on there. It sounds like actually a pretty fascinating sort of project.
Victor, thank you. There's no objection. I'd like to move on to another issue. I know we have a lot of people here. Fine. Still taking things out of order. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming. Thank you for speaking.
And you have a really great committee, who I don't see walking away from, okay, now we have the money, let's walk away.
But how much is money? Are we talking $500 or $500,000?
Well, for something, I mean, we talked to Hudson River Housing, and this, I don't know if we're going to pursue it, but we talked to Hudson River Housing about the idea of a down payment program in which people that meet a criteria get some kind of assistance in making a down payment. That's a $10,000 number. So $10,000 could be the number that gets somebody that is struggling to come up with a down payment on a house, the ability to buy that house. So $10,000 matters. So even if we're collecting $500 and somebody is waiting for a new house, we'd be that 20 times if we got somebody's down payment.
But the committee would come back to the town board before any program to spend money for approval.
Totally what you need to think about is what your community wants. Do you want ownership? Do you want rental? Do you need a little bit of both? You know, what, are you doing seniors, doing younger people? A little bit of both, you know, we often need a lot of that. You sort of start there from the need. And once you do that, you can work that part for that.
Okay, I think we've beaten the topic to death. I think the committee knows what the board wants.
For your diligence in contacting us, I am the recipient of a petition with, at this time, 590 up. I checked it earlier today. 590 this afternoon. Can I, let me just finish. I've received 91 emails, and I have answered all of them. So thank you for writing, and I take your comments and concerns seriously, and I will continue to keep you all updated. Out of the 595, 600, something, whatever we've received today, we've had quite a few. When it was 590, when I checked it this morning, we had close to 280 Rhinebeck residents sign on, which is a huge amount. We've had about 90 of our budding neighbors from Clinton, Island, Red Hook, Statsburg, people who are right in the vicinity, and then a large number of people who visited Rhinebeck or grew up here or don't live here anymore. So this tells me that not only are the residents concerned and our neighbors, but people who love Rhinebeck from visiting for years. So there's a great amount of concern, and I will continue to keep you all updated. I don't know how the board members feel about this, but this is a very complicated issue, as you can imagine. It's property rights issue. We have a five-page statement that I could either read now, or we could take some comment. Does anybody have any feeling about this? We have attorneys advising us, and I think that we need to follow their advice. And I want you all to know that we're very concerned about this issue. And should I read the statement? You think it's a good time? If I need help, we'll someone take over. It's five pages, and an attorney wrote it, so it's...
We all know how to read.
Yes. It's not necessarily my personal voice, but I do agree with this. It's a town board statement regarding the gravel mine issues, April 28, 2014. And we will post this on our website, too. The town board has received numerous communications from our citizens with regard to the mining overlay district contained in our town code. The town board has requested its planning board attorney and the attorney to the town, John Martin and Warren Plansky, to investigate all issues relating to this matter, including but not limited to, one, the extent to which the current boundaries of the mining overlay district are consistent with the recommendations for that district contained in our comprehensive plan; two, the status of the applications for special use permits from the town for expansion and/or modification of existing approved gravel mines; and three, the status of applications pending before the DEC for new or modified mine-land reclamation permits for properties within this mining overlay district. We are aware that the current overlay district encompasses lands which contain significant and very sensitive environmental characteristics. The town board has concerns about the impact of such expanded mining activities may have on the environment and community character of the surrounding areas. We are also aware that the vested rights of property owners are entitled to a certain degree of protection, and that the resolution of all these issues could involve extensive administrative proceedings and possibly even litigation. In light of these facts, the town board has been advised by our attorneys that it's in our own best interest to, we rewrote this, so forgive me if I stumble through a little bit, to be mindful, it may not be appropriate for us to have extensive dialogue until the attorneys have finished doing their due diligence and advising us on how best to proceed with our due diligence. Any action taken by the town board will involve one or more processes which will require many public hearings, at which time all concerns of the public and the affected property owners can be heard and considered. Four more pages to go. In the meantime, the town board does feel it's appropriate to update you, our citizens, with regard to the status of the various mining applications issued and/or pending before the town and the DEC at this time. We have determined the following 12 points. One, there exists currently a 38-acre life of mine, mined-land reclamation permit issued for a property now owned by the Red Wing Properties Incorporated on White School House Road. This mine is located on property consisting of approximately 241 acres. Two, the 38-acre gravel mine has received a special use permit from the Town of Rhine Beck Planning Board and a mined-land reclamation permit from the DEC for surface mining only. The site has been permitted, it has been a permitted sand and gravel mine, and it's been in operation since approximately 1987. Three, the property owner has made an application both to the DEC and to the Town of Rhine Beck Planning Board for expansion of that 38-acre mine permit mining below the water and as part of its reclamation plan to... as part of its reclamation plan to create a nine-acre lake within the 38-acre site. Four, the DEC conducted an uncoordinated, is this supposed to be a coordinated CECL?
No, uncoordinated.
Uncoordinated CECL. And there are a lot of acronyms, so it's a State Environmental Quality Review Assessment. Environmental review of the nine acre, that's a CECL. Nine-acre expansion application and issued a negative declaration, finding that the proposed nine-acre expansion below the water would not have potential significant environmental impacts. And then draft environmental impact statement, which is a DEIS, need not be repaired, prepared. So the nine-acre expansion application has been approved by the DEC. We know this and I don't think the planning board of the towns, as me going off page here, has an issue with that. One, two, three, four, five. However, the application for the nine-acre expansion special use permit is still pending before the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. To date, the application process has not been completed and no decision has been made by the planning board to grant or deny that application. Is that five? Okay, six. Am I on six? Thank you. The property owner has filed an additional application with DEC to permit an expansion of the sand and gravel mine above and below water within the 141 acres of the 241 parcel, including the originally proved 38-acre life of the mine area. So this is the expansion that we're talking about. I see that you're taping this and just so all of you know, we're being recorded. It will be on Panda TV 23 and archived there. And it's also, I believe, usually posted on YouTube. I don't know if it will be tonight since Panda's only taping it. It will be archived and we'll make every effort to get this available to anyone who wants it. But Panda TV 23 usually has this up within a week. Point seven. The DEC has lead, the agency has issued a positive, which means that they see that there are problems, there are issues. A positive declaration, I think Alan said it's kind of like going for a cancer check and you get positive results, there are problems. You need to do more, more searching. They've issued a positive CECL declaration in conjunction with that application, finding that the exposed project for the expansion has potential for one or more very significant environmental impacts and that a DEIS is needed to be prepared. The DEC conducted a public scoping session with regard to this application, the one for expansion, and I think this is the one that, that concerns us, and issued a final scoping document dated August 17th, 2009, which identified environmental issues to be evaluated in a DEIS by the applicant. It is the town's understanding that one or more iterations of the DEIS have been prepared by the applicant and submitted to the DEC for its acceptance, but that to date, the DEIS has not been accepted as completed or declared ready for public review. So it's our understanding that the applicant has gone for the DEC a multitude of times and it's been kicked back. Eight. If and when the DEIS is completed to the DEC's satisfaction and the DEIS is accepted as complete for purposes of commencing public review of the same, the town and other involved interested agencies and members of the general public will be entitled to review and comment on the DEIS in accordance with procedures set forth within the CECL regulations. So we anticipate that if and when this is ever accepted, we'll go through a lengthy process of vetting this. Point nine. In conjunction with that process, it's the town's understanding that there could be environmental issues identified which require resolution through adjudication. In that event, a DEC administrative law judge would be assigned to adjudicate, adjudicate these issues. At that time, the town and other involved and interested agencies and members of the public would have the opportunity to petition for party status, to participate in this adjudication hearing process. I believe that gives the town and any other interested parties a legal designation for participating in this. Thank you, Alan. Ten. It is the town board's understanding that the DEC may not make its final decision on the proposed application for expansion until it has made written findings which determine, among, among other things, that the DEC has certified that consistent with social, economic, and other essential considerations from, among the reasonable alternatives available, the action is one that avoids or minimizes adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practical, and that the first, adverse environmental impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practicable by incorporating as conditions to the decision those mitigative measures that were identified as practical during the CECL review process. Only after such certification can the DEC make a determination to approve the gravel mine expansion. So I think in plain English, there are a lot of hoops that, and a lot of conditions that need to be met. Again, this is attorney speak, so I apologize and bear with me. Point eleven. Application for the expansion will also have to be made by the applicant to the Town of Rhinebeck for a special use permit pursuant to the town's zoning laws. To date, however, no such application has been submitted to the planning board. It is also, okay, so 12, this is the last one. I'm almost at the end of page four. It is also the town's understanding, based upon a review of the comment letter issued by the DEC Division of Environmental Permits after review of the second draft of the DEIS submitted by the applicant, that an incidental taking permit will be required pursuant to Article 11 of the Environmental Conservation Law with regard to the Blandings turtle habitat. This is a big issue. It's a very sensitive environment. It's been identified as one where Blandings turtle could and do live. So a taking permit is a, is a big thing to get. That taking permit application process will also involve public hearings and the opportunity for public comment which the town and others can participate in. Okay, two more paragraphs. With regard to the issue of amendment to the town zoning law, the town board has requested its consultants to carefully review the boundaries of the current mining overlay district. If it is determined that the current boundaries of that district are not consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, it is our intention to proceed to enact a local law amending the boundaries of the overlay district to ensure the same is consistent with the town's comp plan. That process will require its own environmental review and will necessitate that we conduct public hearings. In addition, any such proposed law will be referred to the planning board for its review and recommendations and to the Dutchess County Planning Department for its review and recommendations in accordance with provisions, Section 239 of General Municipal Law. In the meantime, the town board thanks the citizens of the Town of Rhinebeck for its interest and comments on this matter and assures all of you and all concerned that we will be proceeding in a responsible, careful manner which best protects the environment, the health, the safety, the welfare, and the property rights of all citizens and property owners of the town. I did it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. If anybody would like to speak...
You can do it, yeah.
I could, but I don't want to. If anybody wants to speak or be heard, this distills down to the fact that we take this process seriously, we're getting legal advice, and we're proceeding on these two fronts. So come on up and I think we're gonna ask that, you know, and I can do it. I'm gonna ask that people sign in. But if you just...
You have a right to put a name on?
If you just state your name, I'll, I'll make sure that the, John, the clerk and I create the list.
My name is John Lebowski. And I've been born and raised on that farm, where this mine is now. I want to say something about the nine acres that have been accepted by DEC. No more, no further than quarter feet from the foundation. There's a little spring. This little spring has a stream that goes about a half a mile, working on a hand and a hill. I've been along it many times. I don't know if this is gonna affect it or not, let me make my mind. The spring may disappear. But in this little spring, if you walked along it this time of year, you would see many, much wildlife, like frogs, lizards, mosquitoes. And, and the main thing that icing is the road is very old and trampled and it's hard to come. And then they come up there in the fall, bringing a brook out and in the ground in the fall. And they live in extremes, they get about two inches, then they go back into a land and a hill. It's just my concern, is this the end of the spring in this wetland? If you would walk through it, it has a lot of ice between the floor and flooring and everything else. I don't think the DEC even looked like this when they took this. I think they should be aware of it. Maybe it's a reason, you know, contact. That's waterfall I've seen with this mine. There are many of them, I'm sorry. There's many people here have them right.
Thank you. Yes, could you please come up and introduce yourself?
I'm Ellen Hubbard and I heard of your petition and I, there are many people here tonight who have not signed your petition, so if you have an extra sheet, we could sign it tonight and before we leave. Since this is not really a public hearing for this issue, we would still like to have our names on a petition.
It's not my petition.
A petition.
Yes.
It's online.
I'm not, maybe somebody who knows could get up and publicly give me a dress. Thank you.
My name is Sue Greenberg. I'm living on White Schoolhouse Road and I'm a part of a group of about 20 residents of White Schoolhouse Road that knew nothing about this whole proposal about two months ago. Am I not being heard?
Yes.
You're gonna have to hold it right to your mouth.
And since we found out about the proposals, starting from two people on the street, there were over 600 people who have signed this petition. And that's what most people that you speak to don't even know about the proposals. So I want to say that this is a very, very important issue and it's something that we continue to need to spread the word. The petition is online. We have flyers that, if you want to email us at ruralrhinebeckneighbors.com, I can send you a link to it. Or you can go onto the link and go directly on. And I've also been posting on Rhinebeck Forum prior to every one of these meetings and the link is also on there. So please spread the word, let your neighbors know. We do not want mining expansion in Rhinebeck.
Sue, say that you know the address.
I can say it, I have a nice loud, well, I've got a good microphone tonight. It's ruralrhinebeckneighbors.com. And Sue has also been posting on the Rhinebeck Community Forum. And if you Google that, there will be links to your site as well.
And you're also free to post your comments. We've had some amazing comments of concern about this and I have a letter to submit. I, I don't know if you want to spend time reading any of them, but...
We have, I'm keeping a folder, so I'll accept anything. I don't know that we're, it's just, it's a discussion item. I don't think it's a public hearing.
Yeah, that's fine.
But we're happy to hear anyone and we certainly have a growing folder in the clerk's office.
So that's it?
Thank you.
Sign the petition. Write a letter.
We're just speaking our names?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Carl Duncanberg. I grew up in Rhinebeck. I live here again now. My family has lived in same place at the end of Ballenbecker Road. We're chasing to the existing mine for over 30 years. For anyone who doesn't want to do the math, that means we bought the, purchased the 140 or so acres that we live on. Beautiful woodlands predating the existence of any mine by a good 10 years. So it's something to keep in mind. I've said this before probably to the same people, but I just, very briefly, and we're gonna take pity on you, we've coordinated this, so, you know, for every one of us to get something to speak tonight, there are probably 10 or 15 of us that want to, so keep that in mind. What I really want to point out at every opportunity that I'm given is the tremendous job that all of you have done and that the people that came before you, Sally Mazeroa and so many people in, being very careful about the types of businesses that have been allowed to operate here. And that doesn't just come down to the type of chain restaurants and other things, comes to industrial projects and everything else. I think they all deserve to be considered in the same breath. I still remember the day when I was, probably in the 1980s when I was growing up, that my mother told me that there would probably never be a McDonald's in the Town of Rhinebeck. And at the time, I was pretty outraged about the 15-minute drive to Kingston, but that's a lifetime to a 10-year-old, you know. But in the intervening years, I've certainly come to have a new perspective, suffice it to say, and who really appreciate the vigilance that the town board has shown and the planning board, the zoning office, really carefully crafting a town that we can all really be proud of. And I think what my fear is and what all of our fears are is that certainly the expansion of this mine, if not what has already been approved, the smaller project by the DEC, really blur, if not obliterate, the lines that have been so carefully drawn over so many years between the rural, residential, industrial, and commercial areas in this town. That's what makes up any great small town, I think, in this country. And so it's something that really concerns us. And, you know, that vigilance is something that, you know, no one can take a day off from and it's something that has to be constant. And, you know, for that, I don't envy you, your jobs, but, you know, I think we do all want to thank you for voting as you did after Mike Trimble's presentation at the last meeting and, you know, say that we're hopeful. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Charlie Westler and I've been there for a few times. I actually don't have a lot to say, I'm not gonna go on hopefully too long. But mainly, I, I wanted to say that, to just remind everybody here and our, our board here that, sorry, it's crazy, the people of Mylan, I don't know, I just love them. I don't suppose anybody from Mylan here, but kudos and congratulations, but they saw this exact thing happening just before the DEC made a decision, I'm told, and, and they said, "We don't want it. We don't want it near us." And they fought it and it took them forever and a lot of money and a lot of time. Oh, oh, no, you can, there's a letter from the man who I think was probably most responsible, certainly one of the most responsible guys in Mylan for heading up their action against the mining there. And you can bring that up when I'm done, but he wrote a wonderful letter. The point is, they did it. We can do it too. People just want to. One of the things I wanted to say is that in my business, I, I, this is horrible, I'm in the film business, whenever you want to make a movie, they, they take the script you're gonna make, which is really funny and really hilarious, and they give it to like five lawyers. And you get this huge letter back saying, "You can't do this because somebody's gonna be hurt. You can't say this because, because somebody's gonna sue us because we said the word 'it.'" And then you're like, "Well, why don't I make it a movie?" It's no point. And the point is that there's lawyers who are advising you guys and they're really good lawyers, they're smart guys and they, and, and I know a couple of them that I like them. But don't listen too much to them because they're gonna say, "Oh, we might get sued a little bit." And I love them, I admire them. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
My name is Tim.
Tim, could you just repeat for the, to Ellen Brooke?
I live with my wife Elizabeth on the way to White Schoolhouse Road. Probably directly opposite of the White Schoolhouse Road. I would like to speak briefly regarding the potential levels of truck traffic and noise that have been projected. And recently, for the last several years, there's been... And recently, for the last several years, there's been minimal mining activity, according to two trucks. Even when the mine was active, less active, we heard limited noise thanks to the trees and the bucketed trucking lines and any of the other stuff.
Sir, would you like help? Would you kindly come hold out my microphone for you?
Yes. Okay. Many, even when the mine was last active, we heard limited noise thanks to the trees and buckets being active right faces. Many of these trees are now gone, and various applications for reactivating, continuing, and/or expanding the mining operations are confusingly covering them in quite some ways. At March third, Planning Board meeting, Red Wing's president, Dorothy, stated that twenty trucks are predicted to be, this figure presumably delays to the current application before the Planning Board to expand operations of the existing thirty-eight acre mine to include the Midway Mine and the Bayou Mine. Meanwhile, in an administratively unrelated but very relevant parallel universe, Red Wing, AKA Tinland, has for years been trying to get D E C approval for mega mining operation, which involves expansion of the existing thirty-eight acre mine to include one hundred foot of groundwater, a hundred and forty acre acre acre. As recently as April nine, three weeks ago, the D E C's review of Red Wing's most recent draft of our landback settlement notes a worst case of one hundred trucks per day. The reality could be even more staggering. Back on August twenty-sixth of two thousand and ten, the D E C issued a review of an earlier Tinland, AKA Red Wing, mega mining D E Cs. The D E C writer noted that whereas various two thousand and three permits for this mine called for removal in approximately forty-five to sixty thousand cubic yards per year, the mega mine application then being reviewed could increase the annual yield to four hundred thousand cubic yards per year, eight million yards over twenty years. Given that our towns recently expired special use permit limited trucks to twelve cubic yards, this would equate to thirty-three thousand mail trips per year for two hundred and fifty one-way truck trips per weekday. With the town's seven a.m. to five p.m. limits, this would mean one truck passing by every two minutes. So what is it gonna be? Twenty trucks daily? One hundred trucks daily? Or two hundred and fifty trucks daily? Why should we accept any of these when clearly they're all becoming mining openings intended for continuation of small to medium sized mines? And they all fly in the face of the stated goals of Rhinebeck Masterclass. We must act now before the horses of all run.
Thank you, Tim.
My name is Richard Bonderleth. I live on White Schoolhouse Road, and I've lived in Rhinebeck all of my life. My family has lived here for more than five generations. We currently own a hundred and thirty-five acres of agriculture land, which we run a thirty to fifty head beef cattle operation, and grow Christmas trees and honeybees. I own and operate J.B. Bonderleth and Sons Incorporated. We are an excavating and soil mining operation on White Schoolhouse Road that employs five people. Our company is four generations old, started by my grandfather and his three sons in nineteen four to six, that's sixty-eight years ago. We mine gravel on White Schoolhouse Road for more than fifty years. Before that, we had a mine in Red Oak. Our hours of operation are from eight a.m. to four-thirty p.m. This allows the school buses safe passage with less truck traffic early in the morning. I would like to address the soil mining issue on White Schoolhouse Road. I've heard rumors of changing zoning laws to prohibit expansions of soil mines. My concern is, without being able to expand our company, we will go out of business in three years. Our company has to have sand and gravel to survive. A New York State D E C permit is good for five years. When you apply for your permit, you keep your acreage as low as you can, because you have to pay a fee for every acre enrolled. We also have to post a bond to cover total reclamation of the area in case your company should default for any reason. I am not in favor of a large soil mine operation on White Schoolhouse Road, because I live there and I work there. A small operation has far less impact on the environment, and managed properly can supply the local area for a much longer time. Let's face it, our highway department is going to need sand and gravel products for a long time to maintain our roads. Our community businesses, residents, need to maintain septic systems, roads, driveways, landscapers, farmers, homeowners, and municipalities all need our product. In the past, under the Gene Trombini administration, our highway commissioner, our gravel products and excavating services have been used to improve many of the town roads, Rhinebeck roads. Just to mention the ones that I've worked on, Stone Church Road, Acker Hook Road, Burger Road, White Schoolhouse Road, Pelles Road, Pilgrim's Progress Road, Way Road, Fly Road, Aggerdy Hill Road, Hook Road, Mount Rudson Road, Bolandbecker Road, Old Rock City Road, Cricket Lane, Troy Drive, North and South Interlands, Kerr Road, other projects we've been involved with are the Town Landville, the Rhinebeck Transfer Station, the Ball Fields, the Water Main to Ferncliff Nursing Home, the Village of Rhinebeck Water Reserve Ward, and many others, too numerous to mention. I think what I'm trying to say is, every project needs sand and gravel products. We have a natural resource in our town that is not available everywhere. Let's try to use it wisely and keep it here for our community. One acre of land, dug twenty feet deep, supplies about thirty thousand yards of gravel. Two acres, town regulated, ten acres for five-year state permit, should keep a small business in operation for a long time. I urge your town board to please not pass zoning laws that will force us out of business. My family has helped build this town to the place that it is today. I appreciate the board's thoughts and considerations on this matter. Thank you, Richard Bonderleth.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
I've lived on White Schoolhouse Road for twenty-eight years, and I, our driveway is directly opposite, which is gravel. So I just want to thank you for reminding us of the value of a local business, which is something that I think all of us who have been reacting to the Red Wing proposal for massive mining effort have then have thought about a lot. So I would say that I can personally testify that you've been a great neighbor. Thank you. And your graph is on that driveway, so I would say that you have definitely provided a local product. But I think it's important to understand the difference between a small business and a massive mining project, which is, I think, Tim very aptly summed up, the consequence of somebody who is applying for a permit and paying for a permit to extract a massive amount of gravel. They're not paying for a permit to extract a massive amount of gravel in order to run a couple of trucks a day in order to do it. So I just wanted to bring that to our, everyone's attention, that we're well aware of the value of a local business, we're well aware of the value of somebody who is a local person who acts as a good neighbor, and you think that's a completely different situation, and probably needs to be looked at in a different way in terms of how the zoning regulations fit the town comprehensive plan, because there is obviously room for business in the town comprehensive plan. It's a question of maintaining the character of the town and the nature of the way in which we use our resources. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Frank Dougherty, president of Red Wing Sand and Gravel. A few things I want to say. Will you give me a little more than three minutes? Is that right?
We're gonna try and, let's see, keep it brief. We've got a lot of people here and a lot more to go through. It's a three-minute...
One thing I want to say is that we operated two large operations in the town of Beekman. The town of Beekman is still there. We did not destroy the town of Beekman. We don't intend on destroying the town of Rhinebeck. We had three operations in the town of Grange, way bigger than anything I'm gonna do here. And the town of Grange just bought. I still have one in the town of Grange, the Building Plan, which is operating, it's mostly a supply yard. We had two in East Fishville, one of them being the Waterfield Rod and Gun Club, one we're operating in Mylan right now. Well, nobody likes this in Mylan, but this is my business, and this is what we do, and as Mr. Bonderleth said, this stuff is necessary. I wouldn't be standing here if I didn't have a demand for it and customers that wanted it and needed it. Last week, I got a petition, or I got an email from someone that I do business with, that sent me a copy of the petition, and this flyer is going around, and I sent them back the letter. I was very displeased with the Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce for sending out a mass email that was anti-business. I always thought the chambers of commerce were to promote business. I belong to the Dutchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Red Oak Chamber of Commerce, and I think they do very good things. But this is part of the letter that I wrote to them, and I will submit it to you, one of them. Red Wing has owned and operated White Schoolhouse Road in Rhinebeck for twenty years, or more. Just a little over. As such, we've been paying taxes in Rhinebeck for all those years. We bought this property with the intention of preserving our business. There is and has been a shortage of sand and gravel materials in the Hudson Valley, south of Albany, for several years. If Red Wing is put out of business, these materials will have to be trucked in for many miles of white tree, more problems than the ones that many perceive Red Wing will create. There'll be many more trucks on the road, burning more fuel and causing more damage to the roads. There is a need for these materials locally. Red Wing supplies ice control sand to many of the towns in Dutchess County, including Rhinebeck. Having to truck it in from far away would prove very costly. Now, I'd like to just clear a few things up. The application before the Rhinebeck Planning Board for a special use permit is for the thirty-eight acres on my property that is already permitted by D E C, as we said earlier. It is true that Red Wing has an application with the D E C to expand the area to a hundred and twenty-five acres with an eighty-four acre lake. Please understand that this application has not been deemed complete by D E C, so no permit has been issued for the proposed expansion. I understand the Rhinebeck Town Board is proposing to change the zoning in order to stop Red Wing's expansion. If they go ahead with the zoning change, we will ultimately wind up in court, causing great expense to the town as well as my company. Now, I'd like to address the letter that goes with the petition. There are several untruths and misconceptions in the petition being circulated. Environmental impact, air-water noise, and visual pollution. As far as air, extensive studies have been done, and there will be no impacts to the air surrounding the site. Mining material below water produces damp material that does not generate dust. Red Wing is mandated to water haul roads to control dust. There will only be three or four pieces of diesel equipment on-site, so exhaust from these will not be significant. Noise. Studies have been conducted to mitigate noise. Red Wing does not use backup beeper arms, the ones that go beep, beep, beep. We use instead white noise backup alarms, whose sound does not travel off-site. There will be no blasting. This is sand and gravel. We will not blast. Excavating sand and gravel is done by mechanical methods and does not require blasting. The noise generated by the screening and sorting equipment will be no louder than the operations that are currently going on, whatever Jeff Becker was doing, whatever Mr. Bonderleth does. It's not gonna be any louder than it already is. Water. There has never been an instance in the state of New York or anywhere else that I know where mining below the water table has caused pollution to the water or affected the quantity and quality of the water. Red Wing has created eleven lakes in Dutchess County, and they're all clean water swimming lakes. Not one of them has any sort of pollution. The landing's turtle. We did two years trapping and tracking for landing's turtles. Of several hundred turtles trapped, only two landing's turtles were trapped. Radios were attached to these two turtles, and they were tracked every single day, Saturdays and Sundays included, between April and November for two years. Neither one of these turtles ever ventured into the proposed mining area, ever. They stayed in the water. Look at all the dots on the map, what they were every single day. As far as visual goes, someone mentioned that it's humid countryside. Our proposal seeks to turn hay fields into a clean water lake. When reclaimed, the lake will be very attractive and will be home to more species than exist on the site per se. The majority of the proposed mine is very well screened from White Schoolhouse and Bolandbecker Roads by vegetation, even in the winter. This one's a big one for me. I happen to really like this town. I come here all the time. I go to the Beekman Arms, I go to the farmer's market. We like it here. We're not, I have no intention of farming the village and the town of Rhinebeck. And especially the village, I am not gonna send any trucks through the village. And as far as people that come here to come to the Beekman Arms, or Lovers pine, or whatever, they're not even gonna know I exist, because they're not gonna hear it, they're not gonna see it, I'm three and a half miles away. As far as traffic, that's always the biggest enough. We've been utilizing Spring Lake Road in Mylan, near our road plan, for twelve years, running mostly tractor-trailer kind of, and there's been absolutely no damage to the road. So in conclusion, the work we're doing, or proposing, is we'll not destroy the land. We always leave our properties in excellent condition when we're done reclaiming them. And as Mr. Bonderleth said, we have to put up huge bonds so that the land is reclaimed, even if we walk away from it, if there's money there that will take care of it. Red Wing has always given back to the community that we do business in, and we've created many parks and miles of nature trails. For example, Red Wing Park in East Fishville, beautiful swimming lake. Free to lake in La Grange. Overlook Park in La Grange, lakes and football fields. Red Wing Recreation Area in La Grange, football and model airplane fields. Seven miles of nature trails in La Grange, and five miles of nature trails in Mylan. So we always stay active in the communities that we work in. We don't want to hurt anybody. We just want to stay in business, we want to keep our employees employed, and we want to keep our customers satisfied. So, thank you very much.
May I have a copy of your letter?
Dear hard man, I live on two thirty-five White Schoolhouse Road. How many tractor-trailers a day are gonna move by my house? I'm not gonna hear them. They say a hundred, or twenty, or a hundred and sixty. Didn't answer.
They don't allow that. Do you dodge on that road?
Please don't, no shouting out from the audience. This is, the town board meetings are conducted where one speaker speaks at a time and addresses the board. Uh, sorry, addresses the board. Thank you.
The question was, the gentleman who just spoke didn't answer, didn't discuss that particular item that's come up constantly like everyone who's spoken. Just missed it completely. Then I'd like to hear the answer to that.
Please, the question is, how many tractor-trailers a day? Please come up.
Trucks a day. Don't get off on a second how in this place.
Trucks.
Yeah. At present, there are no tractor-trailers allowed on that road.
It's just trucks, vehicles.
I can't tell you. It's based on the economy. I propose twenty, it may be thirty to forty a day. I don't really think it's gonna be more than that. The whole culture of this business has changed in the last ten years or so, and it's gone from big trucks to little trucks. My Building's Plan, we used to run tractor-trailers out of there, seventy-five a day. Now, I get maybe fifty, sixty trucks on a very busy day, and they're all five-yard trucks. So they're not big. You know, the tractor-trailers are necessary to do things like supply highway sand to towns and that sort of thing, and so are the triaxes. But I don't think they're ever gonna be more than fifty, sixty trucks a day. Ever. I'm trying to get away from that.
I'm sorry, hold on. People who've spoken already, let's, if anybody else new wants to come up, we would like to hear from someone who has in common, or Joel.
Just very briefly, White Schoolhouse Road happens to be the road that my mother and I travel when we're going from the town to... I travel when we're going from the town to the center for performing arts and back towards. There are 648 people signed on to that petition. I signed on about a week or so ago. The impact on taxpayers here when it comes to road repairs, the impact on water, the noise, the traffic, the tourism, the wildlife, the smells. Do a little Googling if you go to miningfacts.org, which is pretty much a pro-mining website. Quote, "The use of water in mining has the potential to affect the quality of surrounding surface and groundwater." Unquote. That's from a pro-mining website. You know, increasing the size of the current mining operation by over 300%, I don't think that's necessary. I salute the folks on the town board for taking interest. I salute the Keep Rynebeck Rural for their work, and I salute the Rynebeck Chamber of Commerce for sending out that petition. I would also say that in 2014, there's more than one way to drive the economy. There's more than one way to drive the economy. You don't have to destroy the local economy, you don't have to destroy the environment, you don't have to jeopardize the air we need to breathe, you don't have to jeopardize the water we need to drink. And for instance, if you go to solarizeneyork.org or solarizemadison.com, look at Danby in Donkey County, look at Caroline, look at Genesee County, there are other ways. I'll just say very briefly, in Madison County, they increased by 800% the solar installations in one year. A 5-kilowatt solar system went from $20,000 for a homeowner to $5,000 for a homeowner, just bulk purchases, really ending up green jobs at HudsonSolar.com or whatever solar company is picked. There's more than one way to drive the local economy, other than damaging and destroying and jeopardizing our water and air.
Is there anybody who'd like to speak who hasn't? Paula and then this young lady.
Paula Turnbull from Slay Creek Road. One of the things I feel is really important is the, in the Act of Plan, even back in 2008 and earlier, it said that it was important to strip mining. And when you read all these points that you have discussed with your lawyer, I noticed that any action you had to make the zoning law in compliance with the Act of Plan is way up ahead. Does that mean that that's going to be done after all the D E C actions?
I can't answer that. I don't, yeah, I don't know. Our attorneys would have to advise us.
My name is Kestlin Carlson here, and I am one of the people that signed the petition who doesn't actually live in Rynebeck and didn't grow up in Rynebeck. But I moved here about five years ago. And I fell in love with it because it is Rynebeck, and it does have that character and that diligence and everything that he spoke about earlier. And I think, also speaking as an environmental studies student who will be going into environmental engineering, it's undeniable that there are environmental impacts on the air and the water and our roads and for the wildlife, and to try to think anything else is absurd. I know some people that live on White Schoolhouse Road, and I personally have enjoyed that road, that environment, everything about that area for a number of years, as everybody else here has. To see 60, even 60 trucks a day go down that road, it would be horrible. It would change it entirely. And even though they wouldn't be coming directly through the town, it changes the town. It's an industry, and it will change how business is done here and the type of people that it attracts. And even though Rynebeck is, you know, a second home location for a lot of people, it still speaks balance to how many people have showed up here today to protest it. So, I think that the mining expansion will not only affect Rynebeck and its people, but the tourism and all, you know, second most important is the environment. I just think it would be, it would destroy everything about there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kestlin.
I'd just like to say, in the interest of accuracy and response to Ms. Dority's comments, I highly recommend to all parties the 27-page comment letter, D E C, I believe released on April 24th of this year, referring to the more freezing D E I S on the Red Wing proposal. I think it identifies the issues. It identifies clearly, we do have environmental concerns, we do have economic concerns, we do have quality of life concerns. I've just talked to Henry Campbell today, he's out there sitting working in my garage here where the car crashed, it was a small school bus on Slipkew Road. Apparently there were any serious injuries, but once again, there are no revisions here which need to be addressed, environmental, quality of life, all of these things. And I feel that I'm very grateful to the town board for looking into this, I'm very grateful to my neighbors for making an active interest in this. This is something that it is of great significance to all of us living out there, and I sincerely hope it's of great significance to everyone who lives in Rynebeck and our surrounding communities. The area out there is one of the most significant ecological habitats in the county of Rynebeck as D E C quite clearly has designated, has shown. And I think that's something we should never lose sight of. Once it's gone, it's gone. And it's not something I think any of us want to give up on. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Would anybody else like to comment? This gentleman first and then, does this gentleman, first and then please come up and ask whatever question you'd like. Now, I have to pull it towards you and hold it really close.
Hi, my name's Scott Tamaki, and I've lived in Hudson Valley pretty much all my life, mostly from the Nilburg area. And I studied earth sciences in college. And probably most of you know, the basic simple fact is that all these gravel beds were quit down when the glaciers came through about 30,000 years ago. They are not going to be replaced unless another glacier comes through. This is a finite resource, and we have to be careful about how much we take out. If we take out all at once, there's none left for anybody else that comes after us. That's the first thing. The second thing is that the owner of the Red Wing Mine is taking some credit for the lakes and the beautiful water that it's creating, and it's true. This is very pristine water, but that water is actually within the gravel right now. So, that's pristine water that's there right now. It's not water that suddenly makes an miraculous appearance after all the gravel's gone. So, that is another very useful resource. These actually are very good accelerators for pure and clean water. And the other thing I will say is that I lived in Nilburg for most of my life, and on 82 going south, about five years ago, I remember I used to travel that road quite a bit, and at one time, I never noticed a mountain on the east side of 82 as you're going south. And one time it went by, and there was a mountain, and it was about seven stories high. So, the town is still there, but it does now have a mountain of mining tariffs. Maybe they've taken away now, but they did have it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
My name's Louis Amaru, and I had lived on White Schoolhouse Road for about 20 years, if I'd like to be similar. Before I make my very brief remarks, Elizabeth, do you have a copy of the letter that was sent to you by Mick in Myland?
I'd have to, oh, is that the one you gave me, Sue? Then it is in our, give me the other copy, and I'm sure our clerk is very diligent. We have a folder, I look through it every couple of days. I can't tell you.
Would you please read that letter to us? You have...
More reading?
Would you like to read it?
Sure.
Would you please read it? Okay. It's not a long letter. I wasn't planning on reading that. Carl, give him a better voice than you. She's probably a bit of a... I just want to make my...
You would like to enter it into the public record? That's fine.
I would like the audience to hear the letter.
Yes.
It's a powerful letter.
Thank you.
My remarks are addressed to something that I thought would be obvious, but I've been stating the obvious all my life, so I'll state it. To me, the essence of this problem is maybe more practical than I've ever been. Essentially, that property represents for me, an retired teacher, the largest asset I have. And I'm absolutely positive that real estate people or conscientious are going to steer people away from buying land on that street. It could be a beautiful street to live on, it's a road actually, it would be wonderful to live there, but nobody, especially those with children, would be interested in moving on a road where trucks are going to be urbling down, not always obeying the speaker. So, that is, to me, what's essential, is that a community, White Schoolhouse Road is a community. We are neighbors. We become very much aware of how much we are neighbors because of the struggle we're going to have with Red Wing. And we want to preserve the integrity of that. The whole essence of what a community is will be, I think, strongly affected, if not destroyed, by this operation being allowed to continue with the intentions that they have. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Carl, are you going to read the letter?
Sure. Yeah, it's about a speech and a half.
You can do it, it's easy.
Okay, sorry. There are more of us than I thought. I made a different conversation the last time I was up here, about how many of us would speak. Okay, so this is from Bill Jeffway, Myland, who is sort of, I guess, the spearhead of their fight to keep Red Wing out of...
I'm sorry, it's from Bill Jeffway?
Jeffway, yes. "When Red Wing Sand and Gravel bought what had until then been a local mine in Myland in 2002, the size and scale of the mine became industrial and impact overnight. County and state officials got involved because of the risks, like dump trailers on school bus routes were so great and Red Wing appeared deaf to resident concerns. Quote-unquote grandfather from an era when local small mining was allowed, that mine continues to expand in size and operate on an industrial scale with a modified truck route. The citizens group, Myland Concerns, helped all citizens understand the townwide impact of a second industrial-scale mine that Red Wing sought on Turkey Hill Road in 2003. That mine would, according to their own records, put a dump trailer on the road every five minutes from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. throughout the year. They own a third parcel on Academy Hill Road. Can you imagine all three operating simultaneously? To make a 10-year long story short, Red Wing implied they could outspend the town on legal fees when Myland banned industrial-scale mining. And Red Wing had taken aggressive legal positions like stating that a zoning amendment was not needed for them to mine and that the town's comprehensive plan was invalid." We just heard more of that a few minutes ago. "They were wrong. Myland had joined the Greenway Compact that allows the New York State Attorney General to step in and defend the town if that office sees the defense appropriate. Myland lost the first legal battle when a decision was handed down by a Poughkeepsie judge in favor of Red Wing. But the New York State Attorney General supported our appeal to New York State Supreme Court, and the three dump judge panel ruled in favor of the town's home rule right to plan for its future through zoning regulations in 2010. Their argument went out of its way to criticize the Poughkeepsie ruling. The lesson from Myland, if there is one, might be that a town can chart its future through its comprehensive plan and zoning, but it requires organizing and persistence and work at all levels." And then there's a short addendum here, just a couple characters. "The April 23rd Observer has a letter titled, quote, 'Red Wing is a caring local company,' end quote, on page 13. When I read the headline, I knew it would be from a family member, not a real person in the community. Eileen Dority is most remembered in Myland for admitting she lives, quote, 'nowhere near a mine,' an exclamation point, end quote. Their so-called Myland, quote, 'nature frail,' end quote, is used as an ATV tract by Red Wing tenants who live in Red Wing houses adjacent to the proposed mine. Red Wing started buying up adjacent homes, anyone who would have legal standing and oppose the mine. They like creating lakes because it saves them money from reclaiming the land. This is no gift. Our lake was going to be our only town aquifer as well. There's not one thing that is caring about that company aside from the desire to make every dollar of profit possible, which is fair as a business, as long as local residents' rights are balanced with town officials who protect the rural character of the town." I could go on and on, Bill.
It's a discussion item. I think that we will be continuing this. Do we have, can we have a show of hands? How many more people would like to speak? Maybe this, your, our last one? Great.
I want to be straight to the point. I'm Michael Gardner, I'm from Elidah, I live three miles from the Livingston Plant. He says, that's, you're not going to see it, because you plant pine trees all the way around it. Noise, noise is always going to be there, machinery is generally noise, it's a great appearance. And why do you have to be in every town, be in every county? And that's my final thing, is I see a truck every morning on the way to work, at 7:35 in the morning on January 19th.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Sue, come on up. Unless, if anybody else who hasn't spoken would like to be heard, we'll hear from Sue and move on.
Very briefly, on the petition, you'll see a lot of comments, as I mentioned before. A lot of them are not very favorable toward Red Wing. One of them in particular, I just wanted to read to you. Having dealt with Red Wing in Myland, Russell T. said, it was from Red Hook, "I can only warn you to be vigilant. They will say anything, skew reports, and use all backroom political means to get what they are after. Think of the old colonial powers that suck all the resources from the country and put almost nothing back in exchange." That's pretty scary.
Thank you, Sue. Unless anybody else wants to speak, we're going to, I think, close the discussion for this evening. It will be continued, and we'll take care of a bunch of other business. Thank you all for coming and speaking, and we will continue to keep you informed. We're going to take a three-minute recess. I'm sorry, everybody, please, if you have business, take it outside. We're going to continue our town board meeting. Thank you. We've gone off schedule here, so I'm going to pick up with, I'm sorry, everybody, please, we're, we're going on to our resolutions, I don't think, let's go on to the approval of the prior minutes. We haven't done that yet, have we? May I have a motion and a second to approve the prior minutes from our March 24th meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? So moved. Excuse me. Let's just close the door. Resolution, this is tab number one, I'm just catching up. Resolution 2014-116, approving preliminary accounts payable, abstract four, vouchers 369 to vouchers 581, checks in the amount of $262,860.31. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. I should have said aye. Resolution 2014-117, approving preliminary capital projects, abstracts for $7,933. May I have a motion? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
You don't oppose it. So moved. We're up to resolution, we're up to the third tab, Rose. Resolution 2014-118, approving a loan from H62 to CDBG Fund. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Any discussion? Bruce, you want to just explain it?
This is for the county grant, the $100,000 we're supposed to be charging, and so we're going to start charging against the county.
For our block grant?
Right.
Yes.
Does this mean that we're going to get the $29,000 back from the county?
Yeah.
Means we're going to get $100,000 from the county.
Well, okay, but this is a loan of $29,000.
Well, we haven't got any money yet. We won't get it until we start submitting bills.
Okay.
But we have to pay bills in order to get money.
And what's H62?
That's the roots and property of the TMP.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Tab number four, resolution 2014-119, appointing consulting engineers. We're going to, moving that we're, this resolution moves that we appoint Erdman Anthony and Westin Sampson as two firms that we could consult with on an as-needed basis. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, on this, I'd like to, with Erdman Anthony, use the engineer, whose rate is $100 an hour, as our current compact. We now pay $100 an hour to our previous consulting engineer, and I don't see any reason that should increase. So I don't know if we have to change the resolution, but when we tell people that Erdman Anthony is a consulting engineer, we ought to mention the name. The other thing is that I believe we follow the practice that if something involves a big engineering job, I don't know what big, is that we put it out to bid, and I think that the practice we should continue. So I would add that to the resolution, that proposed engineering jobs of more than X dollars, and we could talk about X, whether it's 3,000, 5,000, should go out to the public bid.
Well, even though professional services are exempt, I agree we should be bidding anything out. Why are you picking, why are you just saying this for Erdman Anthony? What about Westin and Sampson?
Well, my understanding is we only use Westin and Sampson for Thompson Mazzarella.
No, we are approving these as consulting engineers for anything.
Well, if it's proposed, if it's proposed, I would actually use them for jobs other than Thompson Mazzarella, then I would say the same thing.
That is the proposal, are you, I'm, are you motioning that we--
Yeah.
Somebody help me, it's late, that we amend this resolution?
Amend this to say that--
Do I have, do I have a second to amend this resolution?
And the amendment would be anything over 3,000?
Well, it's got to go with the procurement policy.
We have a procurement policy in place, but professional services are exempted, but can we just stick--
But this is not, what Joe's talking about--
I want to stick to one thing at a time, though. The hourly rate. I'm not in favor, but I'm in favor of going for whoever's right for the job, not the lowest, most--
I have a question, Mike, clearly so. If we decide to use one of these firms for consulting work, doesn't that require a specific resolution for that?
There are often times when we have quick questions. For instance, in the recent past, someone has clear-cut land and thrown the stability of a steep slope over the river into question, so we needed to get an engineer in immediately to give us advice. We need an engineer that we can call and say we have an issue. There's a crack in a bridge, can you look at this? There's a culvert that's collapsing, can you look at it? So it's not for a big project, it's a consulting engineer on an as-needed basis. These firms are both very well-rounded firms with people who specialize in many different areas, not just bridges, not just roads, not just buildings. So I'm in favor of passing this as-is and being able to call on who we think is best, and I'm also in favor of bidding out any big projects.
But, just to the point, what you just described is the purpose of a consulting engineer, and it has nothing to do with big projects.
I agree.
So, that's why I don't understand--
Well, in the past, we've capped, didn't we cap our last consulting engineer at X,000 a year?
5,000.
Yeah, we put it in the budget, but we never used it.
We never used it.
And what I'm afraid of with this is that this becomes the town engineer--
It's not a town engineer, this is a consulting engineer.
When you put this kind of language in it, it becomes the town engineer, and then it becomes, they wait till the last minute, and then they say, oh, we're the only ones that can do it, and they get the job. And because of the professional exemption, they bypass the whole discussion. So that's, the purpose of the consulting engineer was to save us money, to point us in the right direction, and make sure we knew everything we needed to know before we decided to go ahead with the project, and not get trapped in dependency on the town engineer.
I agree. The department's call the engineer and say, I need advice on X.
And they have budgets for that.
And they have--
Right, and, you know, if they go over the budget, we are left to pay the cost.
Well, it's never really happened.
Technically, they can't go over the budget unless they ask.
Technically, but have we had occasions where people did go?
An engineer? Not that I know of.
And again, the procurement policy does not cover professional services.
Well, we are mixing two things up. We are mixing up professional services for a project with a consulting engineer. This resolution, and I'm going to again put it to the floor and ask for a second, that we appoint a consulting engineer for the rates specified and be able to choose with some discretion who we hire for which project.
Well, I think you have a pending motion to amend this.
Okay, so let's vote, let's vote on amending the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Doesn't pass. Can I put this resolution as-is, 2014-119, appointing consulting engineers Erdman Anthony and Westin Sampson for the rates published here, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Aye.
That would be a nay. You're against?
Nay.
Nay. The resolution passes. Three, three yes, two nay.
Over grand to all these rates that appear, the 155.
Thank you. Resolution 214-220, releasing from the workforce housing program at the Gardens units, 413A and blank to be filled in for phase 2C, this for the public. Well, Joe, would you like to--
Yeah, this would surrender all the remaining workforce-designated units in phase 2. We would still keep whatever rights we have in phase 3. The affordable housing, they recommend it. As you know, the workforce units have really not been selling, we have sold two out of the eight that we had. The committee thinks that they're really not suitable as workforce units, and we could make better use of the money that we would get upon surrendering of these units.
Any further discussion?
Well, what are you saying we do with the money?
I'm not saying we do anything with the money, I'm saying we hold the money until we have a use which will come before the board with the money.
But it was the recreation fees that this was negotiated with, right?
Well, what we did is we reduced the amount of the recreation fee in order to get a fund for affordable housing.
No, no, I don't think that was it, I think it was to do this specifically.
It was in this connection, but we still have the need for affordable housing. So that's why I think the money should stay for affordable housing.
I believe Bruce is making a point, I don't want to speak for you, but I know where you're going with this, that when we negotiated for workforce housing money from the Gardens, that we cut specifically the money that was coming from any fees associated with that to recreation.
Right.
And since we have this money, you know, we can, that we look at where it's going to go. Does anybody want to, I'm in favor of looking at holding the money and discussing at a later date where it goes. Does anybody want to make a motion to resolve this resolution to hold the 25,000 aside to be determined?
The agreement for giving us the money was for affordable housing. The agreement with the Gardens, this declaration is that the money would go to affordable housing, and I don't think we ought to be weakening our commitment to affordable housing.
Who stipulated that the agreement be, that the money be returned to affordable housing? Was it us, or was it the developer?
Nobody. Nobody. This is an open switch, and I just want to, I don't mind holding it until we can see if there's a plan for affordable housing, but this was rec fees that were cut to see this, and I thought that was good at the time, but this didn't pan out. So, in my view, this should not be left on the shelf for affordable housing.
Well, it was cut because we wanted to get the money for affordable housing.
At the Gardens, you're right. You're right.
Right, so whether it was at the Gardens or some other place, I think the money should stay for affordable housing.
I mean, that was the rationale behind accepting this deal with the Gardens, was that instead of having workforce housing there, we would have a fund that we could support people in rentals or down payments for houses elsewhere.
What, when did that happen?
That was the whole discussion with the Gardens, Rose, that they were going to give us $360,000 for affordable housing.
And what we did, we specifically said, we will cut this amount out of the rec fees, and you will go about it this way with the lower-priced units.
Yes, because--
And that didn't work out that way.
Yes, because we wanted the money for affordable housing. I don't know what changes and why--
Because--
Why this should go for rec fees, or Thompson Mazzarella, or something else. I think this is the commitment that the town made in the comprehensive plan. This has always been the goal here, is the money should be used for affordable housing. That's why the Gardens gave us the money, was for affordable housing. Yes, you are right. We had to cut the rec fees because the Gardens said, I'm not going to pay 360,000 for affordable housing, and I'm not going to pay the many hundreds of thousands that would be involved for rec fees.
Right, and so now do you have a plan to apply the money to? The reason that made sense was because we got affordable housing.
We thought we could capture 17 units between phase two and three of the Gardens. Let me just finish. That, my recollection was planned, we were going at 10% of, you know, two and three, but we haven't been able to really sell any or attract people, so the, it's a conundrum here, the money, we earmarked it for affordable housing, but it was for a plan that didn't pan out, and we did sacrifice funding rec to fund affordable housing.
But we still have the phase three stuff.
Which, you know, if they're not selling in phase two, why would they sell in phase three?
Who knows, but on the other--
And that's currently no money at all on the floor for affordable housing, right?
On the other hand, the 300--
No, I understand that, but there's no money at all for it right now, which I--
Right, the 360,000 would never pay for 17 units. It was always--
No, to augment, yes.
I think the design, it would be eight units that we would do. But if you take away the money from affordable housing, I think the whole impetus for affordable housing is going to go down the toilet, to be very frank, that you're not going to interest developers and other people in doing something unless you have some money to back it up. So I would think it's a terrible mistake to--
So $25,000?
It's what?
$25,000, you think is enough of a teaser to get developers--
No, it's not just 25,000, it's all the money that would come that's left from the 360,000. Now, the developer, let me just finish, Bruce, the developer says he's not going to pay all that once, only as units are sold will we get some of that money. Now, he can change his mind and pay it to us all at once.
So are we looking still at the 360 plus the 25 for surrendering our rights to these 10% units?
Less the 40,000 that has already been used to subsidize--
So 360 minus 40 is 320, plus 25 is 345.
Yeah.
345 or 320 if we divert the 25 back into rec?
It wasn't just the 20.
Right, it was a bigger amount before we diverted it all to affordable housing. We have an open motion on the floor. Would somebody like to motion a change to the, to the, we have an open resolution on the floor, would somebody like to--
But the resolution doesn't say anything about where the money goes, right?
No, but the declaration, the agreement does say that, that the money should be used for affordable housing.
Let's see the agreement. Who drafted the agreement?
I did the, well, it's modeled after the agreement that Chip Gordon did for the last surrender. I did this initial agreement, and they've signed off on it.
Well, we haven't signed it yet.
No, nobody's signed it yet. That's what we're, Moon is asking for authority for you to sign it.
I'm trying to ask, was it mandated by us or by the developer? Or was it suggested by us or the developer that the 25,000 go into affordable housing? Where did the idea come from?
You're talking about the extra 25,000? It was in the draft that I put in as part of the whole thing that's coming back. Let's just look at the word.
Would the developer agree if we didn't want to use the money for affordable housing?
I have no idea what the developer is positioning their day to use.
It's, it's item one.
Yeah, it's item one, upon receipt of the agreement, they'll pay us 25,000 to be used for affordable housing.
It says on the E above as well.
Rose, are you fighting over the 25 or the remainder of the 360?
I'm, I guess I'm the remainder of the 360. I believe we need to fund affordable housing in some way. I don't, this was at the cost of the rec fees when we're trying to get--
Just this sold.
--the first phase of the park done. And this is money that, some of it would help immensely with what we have, the challenge we have in front of us. So I don't want to, if at all possible, I don't want to crater affordable housing, but at the same time, I don't want to not be able to go ahead with the project and the park because we don't have enough money.
Well, you are creating, or crating affordable housing if you take the money away.
But, not necessarily, because what I said, I asked you, what was the plan? And if it's, if it's sitting there, if the money's going to sit there for another five years, then it's, it's not good money. It's not good use of money. If you want, if you want, if you say it's 300,000 we're going to get back, I don't know what it is, and you want half of that for affordable housing-- and if it isn't, we don't come up with a plan in a certain amount of time, then it goes back into the general fund.
Bruce, the plan that the committee is discussing is, and we've asked Hudson River for a specific proposal, is possibly funding down payments. In addition, in our discussions with you, you suggested that we talk to certain people in Reinbeck about possible grants to rehabilitate places. The committee is proposing to do that. You gave us a couple of names. We are going to follow up with it. So I don't think the money is going to sit idle for five or six years. And, you know, we are, since 2009, we haven't really made good on what we put in the zoning law that we would have an affordable housing program. And I've been trying to-
I just want to go on the record. I think if we mandated developers to provide affordable housing, we, you know, I, I, I think I have made it clear that, you know, the density bonuses and collecting money without a plan is something I'm not comfortable with. While I-
I think the problem with putting an artificial number phase on is what you're going to do is incentivize people to come up with stupid plans to make a deadline. And, you know, and I don't know if it's responsible. We use all 340,000 in one year, maybe it has to be phased in so we can test, as we tested with the Gardens, whether it's a decent program and whether we're getting responses in. So-
Well, so far we have 340,000.
Well, you don't have that. We don't have anything.
Until we sign this.
Yeah. You don't have anything.
Do we want to look at rewriting this resolution to? How the funds are, where they're put seem to be enmeshed in this already. So it's one thing to, you know, if you guys want to vote on this, you're letting me sign it and it's a done deal. Do, does anybody want to make a motion to amend the resolution?
I, I would just, it just seems like, it's been five ye, I'm sorry, it's been five years since we did this. We, we passed this law for this and the committee's been working on it. I used to be on the committee, right? And we've tried different things. We've looked at building stuff. We've looked at all kinds of things. I don't know whether it's real or not. And all I know is we took money that was for the park, basically, and we're at that point, and, and we're going to sit there. I don't want it to all sit. If we could get some of it back for the recreation, for the park, I would be happy.
Park is-
I also think it's important to, to fund affordable housing somehow.
Well, couldn't we handle that question in a separate resolution that says, we have the 25K, here's what you say you want to do with it, we could vote on it, or the committee could come back and say, here's what we want to do with it, we could vote on that.
Yeah, but I, I don't want to pass this with-
This already says it's going into affordable housing. This resolution, it's embedded in here. So I ask-
You can always say, let's say-
If somebody want to-
Since there's no plan to use it, the money hasn't gone anywhere.
Oh, it is, once you say that.
Yes, once you put it into a capital fund, it's there.
There is no affordable housing fund.
Oh, exactly. That's right.
So, so that it should say general fund.
Well, it'll go into the capital account. That's what we've always-
So we can only, we can't move money out of the capital account? Or let's put it somewhere else?
I've asked if anyone, we have an open motion on the floor for this resolution. I'm going to ask one last time and then I'm going to call for a vote. Would anybody like to amend the resolution that's on the floor?
Yes, I'd like to amend it so that it goes into the general fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm opposed because I, I do feel like with the affordable housing issue, it would be good to have a stock of money dedicated to it and if it was earmarked for that to begin with. I think it would be nice to have something on hand. Maybe would help inspire a plan of action.
The resolution passes, we're going to hold the 25,000 into a general-
Well, the, the resolution says, if we pass the resolution, then we'll-
We don't know what the, well, Bruce's resolution, it goes into the general fund, so it could be spent anyway. So you haven't given anything.
We just voted on a resolution to put the 25,000 dollars into the general fund. That was your motion. We voted on it.
And we could create a budget item.
Was it the 25 or all of it?
25, he said.
It's whatever's in the resolu, whatever the amount is that's in the resolution.
The resolution is the whole thing.
John, will you recap what we just voted on?
You just voted to, to amend the resolution to put all the money discussed in the resolution into the general fund. Now you have to vote on the resolution.
All in favor?
That's, that's an unintended consequence, I think.
We just voted to ma-
Then we could have a follow-up resolution that says we're going to take some portion of it and create an affordable housing fund, because there isn't one. Right? Or, or is it, it must, you must have it all. That's, that's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Saying if you want, avoid a viable affordable housing program. And you want me to continue to work on it, then-
You gotta have some money.
You gotta have the money.
And, and that, that 300 and something thousand is it?
Well, okay, let me just tell you what I, what I think so I can, because, because, you know, having it be in the general fund and just kind of float away is not what I intended. It would be nice to have some flexibility about what to do with this money. If it's, if it goes into the capital fund, I'm hearing that there's no flexibility anymore. So at least put it in a place where we can come back next month and say, here's a plan to use it, whether it's for affordable housing or for the rec center or whatever. If we can, we can discuss it then. I don't think we're going to figure out what to do with it today.
I don't think so either.
But on the other hand, it would be nice to get the, the Gardens to work over the money and, you know, get that moving.
Okay, but, but if you're going to put it in a capital fund, you have to create the fund. It takes a board action to do that. Right?
You were asking me?
No, I'm telling you. And, and so you do that, you take the money, it's from here, whatever it is, and you put it in that, that fund.
Okay.
If that's what you want to do, if that's what the board wants to do.
I don't think, I don't think we're ready to say that. I know you aren't.
Well, I, I just know that-
And we have two issues here. One, I have to, I think that the developer's waiting for us to release these units. So this one, this resolution needs to let me do that if that's what the board wants to do. The second issue is, we're going to have this chunk of money, what do we want to do with it?
Look, if you don't release the units, all you're talking about is 25,000. The rest of the money, I think, goes into affordable housing. Well, if you want to play with the 25,000.
I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable at quarter to 10.
I don't either.
You know, trying to figure out what to do with 25,000. I mean, I think we ought to release the units, but I'm not comfortable having to make a decision about what to do with the 25K, right, you know, tonight.
Do we want to table this?
Well, the thing is, maybe we could have a special meeting. We have, the developer has given us a deadline of May 12th.
Then we, I think we should, you know, would anybody like to make a motion to table this and look at rewriting this resolution?
We have to decide what to do with the money in order to accept the developers.
I think we do.
You gotta decide what to do.
I think we do.
Okay, then we ought to table.
I'll make the motion. Fine.
I'll say it.
All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Aye, aye.
The motion is, the resolution's tabled. John, we'll, we'll come back to this. We have until May 12th, so we'll need to do a special-
Well, when's our next meeting?
We don't, um, May 12th. We'll need to do a special meeting before that.
I'm, I'm sorry, Joe. Believe me, I, I believe that we should put money into affordable housing, but I believe this came from rec. So I, it's my obligation to try to recover what I can.
I know, I understand that, Bruce. I won't say that it's always been represented us, that Thompson Mazzarella would be self-supporting. I never thought the town would be pulled on to finance.
Well, it wasn't-
But let me just finish, Elizabeth, please. Thompson Mazzarella, Bruce and I have had this agreement going on for probably two years now and we're not going to resolve it tonight. I, I think though that, I don't know if we're ever going to have an affordable housing program if we don't really put our backs to it.
Let me make a, a suggestion. You know, just let me clarify. It's my understanding that the rec, Thompson Mazzarella was going to be funded from money derived from subdivisions and that we diverted it on this particular project to affordable housing. So that's point one that I want to clarify. Point two is, I'd like to suggest that you and Bruce get together and try and bring something, try and get something you agree on, and I'll schedule a special meeting before the 12th to vet it and we can vote on it then.
Just one correction, Elizabeth. The change in the rec fee was not just for this particular project. It applies to any future projects.
We diverted money from rec towards affordable housing. Yes.
Right. Where the developer on any project in the future provides recreational facilities.
Any kind of recreation and it was left a little, you know?
It was not special legislation for the Gardens.
Okay. Fair enough, fair enough. But I, it's, I remember that this is what spearheaded it and looking at being able to capture 10% of the units for affordable housing in Phase Two and Three. Is that correct?
It was the impetus for a general change.
All right. Well, maybe you two can get together and work on something and we'll schedule a sec, a special meeting before the 12th.
Scissors, rocks, paper, whatever it is.
Pardon me?
We'll do.
This is tabled, moving ahead. Tab number six, Resolution 2014-221, approve hiring for recreation, summer camp and pool. Has anybody, I, I've looked at this. Any, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Resolution 2014-222, appointments to the board of assessment review. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion for the public?
Yes.
We had appointed someone who was unable to serve due to a tragedy in his extended family, which we're very sorry about. So Bill Doughton and Gina Fox have graciously offered to at least fill in this year. And I want to thank you both very much. It's a great service and you'll get us through. I'm, I think I mixed, oh no, I didn't, I'm sorry. I'm motioning that Gina Fox be appointed to a terms, I'm sorry, that runs out on the 30th of September 2015 and that Bill Doughton, 9/30/18. Any further discussion?
Yes. I just want to say that I, I wish that these were separated so that I could vote on one because I'm in favor of Bill Doughton's appointment. I'm not in favor of Gina's appointment only because it makes three realtors on the board of assessment review and there's a maximum of five people that can serve. That means there's one industry with a majority representation with a vested interest. So I have to say no because they're coupled and, but I'm not saying no to Bill Doughton's appointment. I'm saying no because I believe we should have greater diversity on the board without anyone in this during the majority. So I just want to be on record saying that.
Thank you. And I just want to say that I've been working to get people on this for months and sometimes you have to bang on doors and drag them in. And in the future, it would be a huge help. Are there any further comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It's Elaine. The motion carries. Thank you.
We, we tried to get people.
It's very difficult, very difficult. So Bill and Gina, thank you very, very much. And again, Resolution 2014-223, the appointment of the conservation advisory board chair. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second for the public. Ryan Doughton, who has been serving on the CAC first and now the CAB, has come forward and been unanimously supported by his board to serve as chair. I want to say thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. The motion carries. Thank you and good luck, Ryan. We passed resolutions for tabs nine and 10, 224 and 225. We took them out of order. Tab 11, please, is Resolution 2014-226, approving the merchant processing agreement. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion for the public. This is a, this is a credit card function of Reinbeckrec.com that will allow us to collect fees for summer camp and other recreation programs online through a credit card. And the board is voting on whether or not to allow me to sign this. As soon as it's appro, approved, if it's approved, that, that will be up and running and people will be able to sign up for camp online. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-227, approving the town hall use application and its various. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Some discussion. I have a question, I guess for John and for Bruce. The Legion Band, which rehearses here, is it usual, do they usually rehearse here? This is how it's always been.
Right.
Tuesday nights from the end of May through mid-August, except for two. So it seems like about six or seven practice sessions. And Star Library Reading Program and Historic Reinbeck Day. Is there any further discussion? John, these are all scheduled? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I am going to, we're moving on to discussion items and then I'll see if there's any-
We're moving on the electrical transmission upgrades.
One second, please. Where are the electrical transmission upgrades?
This is 10.
We've already passed those. We went out of order. We passed them.
But didn't, did we pass it with the addition of undergrounds?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. We made your change. We voted on it at about 7:05 this evening. I'm going to, under discussion items and then we'll see if there's any new business, if you don't mind. I'm going to ask that we table revising the usage forms for town hall and recreation. I got behind today with a lot of stuff and didn't have a chance to make some notes. There are some addendums that I want to make, particularly to applications that use the waterfront. I'd like to get sign off from emergency services or the police department. And I ask you guys to do some research on it to make sure you knew, to talk to Pete Dunn or Henry Campbell about the concerns at Ryan Cliff. So I'd like to table that, if that's okay. Table. Mandatory safety training makeups. Item number four. I'll just state for the public that our risk manager from Neymar, Josh Albin, conducted classes here on the morning of May 9th and it's mandatory for all elected officials and employees, year-round employees of the town to get this. Good news and bad news is that the Department of Labor oversees this for PESH, which is public, what is it, public, it's so late now, Employment Safety and Health. It's the hour version of OSHA. They oversee it. And according to our insurance company, they've been cracking it down- they've been cracking down and fining towns that haven't had this mandatory training for everybody. So anyone who missed it is going to have to make up. You can, and I clarified this today, Bruce, go through most of the training on your own and read it, but the Violence in the Workplace training is mandatory, that it be taught to you. So we are going to reschedule at Josh's earliest convenience for that one class, which is in August or September, and Josh is also looking into the possibility of anyone who missed it being able to take it on the evening of the 14th. We just haven't gotten confirmation from the municipality that's doing the classes that we can do, but he thinks it'll be fine. So we'll keep you posted.
So we can be violent in the meantime?
No, we should not be violent, and apropos of that, I just wanna say that some things that came up, I think I'd like to discuss later, you know, like, one suggestion that was made was that we lock the back door and the side door and only have one entrance in Egress, and it's pretty eye-opening, what goes on in municipal buildings, and, you know, it's been close to home. We had an incident in Kingston recently, and it's something we need to consider, so. County grants, a discussion. Joe, I think...
I think one of the things we ought to apply for is asbestos removal in this building. I don't know if we'll get it, uh, but, yeah.
It's a shared, it's a...
We'll get it if we don't ask for it.
It's a shared service grant, so if you write it, you're just gonna... I would encourage any of you to write any grant that you want to. I know that the highway is looking at some shared machinery with other municipalities. We're not lead on that. Alan and I are still spending almost full-time administering the grant we got last year. It takes a ton of energy, so anything that anyone wants to write, I would encourage you to do so, and just remember that it's, it's shared services, so you somehow have to hinge it on sharing a service or consolidating something.
We share services in this building, so that the heat's going to the assess service department, which is a shared service department. I don't know what other shared services we do from this building, but anything we can put in, we would argue. Will you let us know if you get any information about when the grant applications are due?
Oh, I think it's on the county website, um, and I...
Maybe John could circulate it.
You can also call the planning...
Well, why don't we make it easy for those of us who have a computer set?
Okay.
Do you have an estimate for how much it would cost to take this asbestos out of here?
At one time, a very general estimate from one person who does commercial... No, it was a commercial, we had a presentation last year. It was, it was a lot, 60,000 bucks, 160?
Well, it ranges from, from 60 to 375.
But what I was told was you can't touch the heating system to upgrade it and improve it, change it, until the asbestos is out of there.
Well, that's not necessarily true. You could change the boiler...
Every night tractor I've talked to says that.
You could change the boiler, you could remediate the asbestos in the boiler room and change the boiler without touching the pipes, and you could do that. That's legitimate. Ideally, we should take all the asbestos out of the building.
Well, but it, but that means we're gonna stick with steam, which is crazy.
Why is it crazy?
Well, are you in here today?
Yeah, but that's, that's a regu...
That's, that's a quality of steam. It's either 212 degrees or it's not.
Bill, this building used to have even heat. I don't remember. Do you remember?
Even heat?
Yeah.
What do you, how do you define even?
Was it comfortable ever, back in the, back when you were here a lot?
Was bookkeeping warm while the clerk's office was warm?
There've been, oh, I'm sorry.
But it didn't have the...
No, I don't remember.
I think it hasn't always been even heat, I would say.
Well, the steam heat is notorious to me.
But as a practical matter, whether we stay with steam or not stay with steam, we still gotta take the asbestos out.
We're digressing a little bit. Um, we have county grants. What about the idea of looking at highway department consolidation, like Red Hook, you know, coming up with a plan, like Red Hook and Village and Town in Tivoli did? They wrote a grant, which is online, which enables them to hire someone to map out how they would consolidate highway departments and what kind of money they would save. And, you know, we have two highway departments here, the Village and the Town, that are our biggest ticket items. Anyone interested in that?
I'm terribly interested, but I'll, you know, I'll get in trouble, so.
I know, my own view is that that's a pretty unlikely thing to get a grant for because if I were the county, I would say, well, you ought to listen to what's happened in Red Hook, and maybe that will answer your questions. So if it's, if we have other viable things, do we take away from the other thing by putting something in for highway? I don't know.
Maybe we can get the village to write that grant, since we did the tech grant.
Yeah.
They wanna write it?
Do you think they're interested in doing that?
I mean, it's our biggest ticket items in both governments, and coming up with a solid plan that shows us how to do it, what the steps are, and what money will be saved.
Are they open to it? Have you discussed it?
No.
Yes, they are. They, they would like it.
The village would?
Yeah.
Who did you speak with? Judges have curiosity.
Over the years, from time to time, various people in the village have, the board have asked. Bruce, they've talked to you about it too?
Mm-hmm. But the board has changed. The current board feels that way? They wanted, they're willing to share all the services? I'm just wondering.
We don't ask if they're interested in writing a grant. All they can do is say, you know, they're not interested.
There are two, for both governments, there are two biggest departments. So if we're looking at saving money for our taxpayers, it's the first place you go to.
Right.
We have two highway departments.
Right, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we, we don't make decisions without them since it affects our, our, our discussion.
Should we request the village board to make that, to put together a grant proposal?
You can, if you, I mean, sure.
You know, I think, I think they should be approached, I think, at a courtesy, just to say, hey, what do you think about this? It's a great opportunity for savings, and then maybe have a discussion with them, with their board.
I think you both said the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, same, Alan, let's say that.
I'd say we could write a letter to them, you know?
We can walk across the street and talk to them.
Yeah, exactly.
Call them, pick up the phone. We talked, I talked to Heath, we talked to Heinz. Everybody talks to somebody. It's good to keep talking.
Good idea.
As you get run over by a highway truck.
No, a truck from the mine, I'm sorry.
Um, any further business? Oh, Joel. In three minutes.
All right. Joel, we...
No paper.
Repair Cafe, such a fun. I wanted to say thank you all for passing a resolution a month or two ago to allow us to have this repair cafe. Everybody's invited. Uh, for free, you get your computers, furniture, bikes, clothing, toasters, jewelry, electronics, toys, instruments, all sorts of stuff fixed for free this Saturday, noon to 4:00 p.m. Uh, right here at Town Hall, May 3rd. And thanks in particular to Gary Kenton of the Village Board, the Conservation Advisory Board, and there was a woman named Jess Scott. Congratulations, Ryan. Jess Scott from the CAB here on the town, just amazing. Uh, I've, I've gotten some people to step forward to be repair coaches and fixers, but Jess Scott of CAB has really taken us on, so thanks to her, thanks to everybody. Uh, there's also gonna be music here. Uh, I will confess and confide that we need some extra tables, and there is an entity in town that has promised to lend us about a dozen tables. I do not own a truck, so I'm about to send an email off to my list tomorrow morning saying, anybody have a truck? Because we only have a few days.
I have a truck. Where do you, where do you need him from?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I will tell you, I will tell you off-line. I will tell you off-line, because I don't wanna get...
Will you help me load it?
Yes, I will help you load it and load him on. All right, so I, I no longer need to, will send out an email, thank you. Um, tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. at the Rhine Cliff Dock, including the event about the solutionsproject.org. There's only a little bit of time left to make comments on the New York State Energy Plan, uh, so it's energyplan.ny.gov. Uh, there are Republican and Democratic officials that have said, Elaine knows this, Senator Terry Gibson, there's actually somebody in the county legislature who's not a Democrat who said, you know, let's have a full, I, I have a resolution on this. Let's have a full refund on all the county home fuel taxes we've collected. Uh, I got some support in, you know, in the legislature for that. It's not even being allowed onto the Jennifer Committee Day. Uh, yeah, that's what's happening. And the law to end pay-to-play that the Orange County Legislature passed last October with a Republican majority, not even being allowed onto the Jennifer Committee Day. Uh, the Lake Ridge Drake Grant, pushing for neighborhood relief for pesticide application, like the Republicans passed in Ulster County several years back, not even being allowed onto the Jennifer Committee Day. And I'm, I'm just putting it out there because there's some really crazy stuff. Stuff that we used to debate and talk about, divesting Dutchess County funds from Wall Street accounts from banks, resolutions to, to ban fracking, not even allowed onto the Jennifer Committee Day, and frankly, nobody in the media's reported. So I'm just, I'm just putting it out there because stuff that just two or three years ago used to be allowed onto the Jennifer Committee Day, maybe didn't get out of committee. Now it's not even being allowed onto the Jennifer, so.
Joel, as far as the energy tax repeal, there is an opportunity for people who did pay the energy tax to get reimbursed. There's a form they have to fill out. There's no guarantee, but they fill out the form. I can actually email that to you, because I've given some to constituents now who have called about this very thing, so there is an opportunity for reimbursement.
Yeah, and to be fair, you know, the county executives also, also shared with me the same information.
Okay.
But they also say, they also say, good luck, and, you know, and that...
Elaine, could you get that information to the clerks and we can get that on the website?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Awesome. Couple of real quick things. Uh, one thing that State Senator Terry Gibson's been fighting a good fight on. I know Elaine's been helping out. I've been fighting the fight for many years. Uh, a lot of Poughkeepsie Journal coverage. May is Lyme Disease Awareness Month because the second Monday, you guys, me, I'm gonna be at Poughkeepsie at the County Legislature. I'm just announcing this. Wednesday, May 14th, 5:30 p.m. here, I'm doing my annual screening of Under Our Skin. It's a documentary about Lyme disease, as Elaine knows and Terry knows. Connecticut and Rhode Island, they fully cover health insurance for Lyme. John was the deputy clerk in the county legislature back in '08, '09. We got a resolution passed, 22 to 3, tons of Republicans and Democrats voting for it. Now, why can't, you know, this is not binding to all of you. Why can't here in state be like Connecticut, Rhode Island, make sure there's full health insurance coverage for Lyme? Frankly, that was several years before the Poughkeepsie Journal even did anything on the issue. It's 2014, it's still going on. Doctors are still not protected. Elaine, you were nice enough to come out last year to the event, so this time, it's Wednesday, May 14th, 5:30 p.m. here, and that's just about all. Uh, was talking to Susanna Harman's of, of Abellon Books today. There's a book called The Zero-Waste Solution, Untrashing the Planet One Community at a Time, by Paul Connet. We are starting a book discussion group with a 20% discount. We're gonna have these books for sale here this Saturday. There's a guy named Wolf Eric Bravo, from the Ulster County Tool Bank, Tool Lending Library. We're gonna start a Dutchess County Tool Bank with your help, and he's gonna be here speaking at, at 2:00 p.m. Last but not least, 55 women in the county jail, 86 mentally ill in the county jail, 13 youth under 18 in the county jail, 19 state parole violators in the county jail may have just failed the urine test, 20 folks in the county jail with bail at $2,000 or less. That adds up to 193. We don't need, with all due respect, you read yesterday's Poughkeepsie Journal, arguing about where the pod should be placed. It's, uh, there's another option. There's another option. We don't need the jail expansion, we don't need the pods. It is, it is gonna be a boondoggle, insane. Call me for more information, 453-215. There's gonna be a vote on that very soon. And if and when those pods are approved, at the cost of $6.4 million, then the argument is gonna be, oh, it's inhumane to keep them in the pod, so we're gonna have to spend 150, 200 million dollars on the jail expansion. Please, I need your help. Come speak up on Committee Day Thursday, May. Thank you for your patience.
Joel, thank you. Thank you for the repair cafe. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
All the best of luck with it, and, uh, thank you. Um, is there any further comment from the public or questions or new business? If not, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second, third, fourth, and fifth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. It was a long meeting. We got some good work done. Thank you.